Can you hear me?
Commissioner Meisenberg, I just wanted to check to see if you could hear us.
I can. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, now call to order the September eighth, twenty twenty five, City of Abilene, Kansas City Commission Meeting. Shayla, may we please have roll call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Witt.
Here.
Commissioner Kohoff.
Present.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Miller is absent. Vol call is complete.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your own, in the business law, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, our next item is approval of today's agenda, and I don't know, was there a correction needed on that? Sports complex. Agreement. You want to turn your mic on real quick?
The item that is on the work study is two A, the Mid-America Sports. Agreement. We can move that from there to the discussion items on the regular agenda.
So is item ten A?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Quinde, I would also like to discuss sewer rates on the discussion session of water rates, if you're amenable to that.
I won't have any data available, but yes.
Uh, it's mostly procedural, just making residential match commercial. So just again, just discussion.
So water rates is ten B.
Uh, no, actually, I think it's the whatever the last item on the study session is, just I wanted to touch base with everybody on sewer. Rates and more specifically, the timing of those rates.
They're just moving that whole last discussion item to. Or the last item on the study session to.
I just want to talk about sewer.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve our agenda today with the changes of moving the sports complex discussion to item ten A, and then moving a sewer rate discussion to item ten B.
Um, Mr. Commissioner Witt, just so I'm clear, there's the discussion, the last discussion item in the study session is on water rates. Um, and so I just want to discuss the sewer with that. Yeah, so not a ten B, but just add sewer onto that.
Thank you.
With that amendment, I'll second.
Okay, motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, we do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller is absent. Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Give me just a moment to make that change on here.
While you're making that change, I did just want to announce, um, while I am here now, my daughter is making her first start in a football game this evening, and so I will be departing at some point throughout the meeting and will rejoin on Zoom.
Thank you. Okay, our next item under five oaths of office, five A, we have Police Chief Jason Wilkins and Finance Director Kelsey Breon. Commissioner Miller, just want to verify that you can hear us.
Yes, I can hear you now. My apologies. I was having some connectivity issues.
Okay, thank you. You are. And then next, under section five is five B, badge pinning ceremony for Police Chief Jason Wilkins. Congratulations to. Usually when the police chief walks out, everyone wants to come in, so. Uh, just congratulations again to Police Chief Wilkins and Finance Director Breon. Um, our next item under six, Employee Suggestion Award Program is six A, Highlight City Suggestion Award Program. City Clerk, HR Director Moore.
Mayor and Commissioners, as part of our personnel manual, we have a section that's entitled the Suggestion Awards Program. This is designed to improve productivity and the quality of public service and city operations by implementing practical suggestions from as many employees as possible. This program allows employees to express their ideas about better ways to do their jobs and rewards employees with some of the savings or benefits resulting from those ideas. Eligible suggestions must increase productivity, improve service to the public, add a new resource of revenue, reduce costs, duplication or waste, improve working conditions or safety, or conserve labor, labor, materials, or energy. We recently received a nomination for the suggested awards programs from Community Development Director Zook, and she is here to make that award now.
So this will constitute six B recognition of Kelly Olson as administrative administrative manager, community development.
Okay, I apologize, Kelly is going to have to come out for this one. So I did recently nominate Kelly Olson, our administrative manager of community development for this award. I'm not aware in my five years here if anybody else has gotten this, so I thought this was a perfect example. Um, so Kelly recently. Released her first two issues of Direct from City Hall. There is a signup sheet, if nobody noticed, where you can sign up for those updates. Um, but what this is, is a twice monthly source on city news, decisions and highlights from recent commission, excuse me, recent city commission meetings and projects. What this is replacing is the commission connection that Kelly would do after every meeting and post on our Facebook page. And the other is the Zen City Platform, which was something that we installed a few years ago. Um, but it was rather costly, so she took basically all of this data and put it into this newsletter and ended up achieving an annual cost savings of $10,000 for the city. So. Um, in my write-up, you can probably read the whole thing, but I'll just get some notes here. Um, I believe it's a great example. Of how creativity and fiscal responsibility can come together to deliver clear, engaging information to the community. So with that, we have a plaque for Kelly. And Brandon, I'm going to have a picture with you and her, and this is just a thank you, and you're awesome, and we appreciate you, and good job.
All right, and congratulations to Kelly on her receipt of the City Suggestion Award Program. Our next item is the consent agenda under heading seven, uh, which consists of the meeting minutes for August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting appropriation ordinance A dash zero nine zero eight two five. AP Payment Register zero nine zero eight two five and appointment of Megan Powell to the Library Board to fill the unexpired term of Tony Zerbusik. Always mess that up, expiring April of twenty twenty six.
Um, I sent Finance Director Breon an email on this, but the only, I had a question on the quarterly match for OCCK. Um, if you would just check on that for us, otherwise I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Well, second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, we will move to roll call vote. Commissioner Kohoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item. Under eight, Public Commons Communications, eight A, Library Card Sign Up Month Proclamation, twenty twenty five. Whereas libraries are foundational to education, imagination, and opportunity, offering everything from early literacy programs to digital tools that support lifelong learning and personal growth. Whereas libraries welcome all people serving as, serving as welcoming and accessible community hubs that connect individuals across cultures, generations, and experiences. Whereas libraries curate collections and design programs that reflect the populations they serve, ensuring equitable access to information, technology, and culture for all. Whereas libraries help individuals navigate life's challenges by providing trusted information, digital access, job search support, and connections to essential services. Whereas libraries continue to thriving local economies by equipping job seekers, entrepreneurs, students, and creators with tools and training to succeed. Whereas library resources help households save money, reduce waste, and make well-informed choices, all through the simple power of a shared public good. Whereas the library card opens doors to endless possibilities from books and technology to lifelong learning and imagination. Now therefore, be resolved that I, Brandon Ryan, Mayor, do hereby proclaim September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, as Library Card Sign Up Month in the City of Abilene, and encourage all residents to sign up for a library card and explore the endless possibilities it offers. Wendy, would you like to take a picture? I guess Cindy, do you want to join as well? Our next item under heading eight is eight B, a public forum. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda, they may do so at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda? Okay, Director Moulton.
Wendy Moulton, Library Director here, and I just wanted to express thanks to the fire department. I know most of them left already, but. Um, they got ahold of us on Monday, last Monday, Labor Day, when they noticed that water was coming into the basement of the library, so we could. Come and take care of that, so really appreciate them looking out for us and helping us with that.
Thank you.
No books were harmed in this incident.
All right, do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our business items under heading nine, first nine A, Public Hearing for the Purpose of Hearing and Answering Objections of Taxpayers Relating to the Revenue Neutral Rate and Proposed Tax Rate as Required by Twenty Twenty One Kansas Senate Bill thirteen. I will now open that public hearing.
Uh, just to speak on the revenue neutral requirement, it is not intended to prevent property tax. It's rather, it's a. Procedure requirement that requires that cities and counties and school boards hold two distinct hearings, one on the revenue neutral rate and one on the regular budget hearing, even if they're held on the same date. The proposed twenty twenty six budget estimates property tax of forty seven point five three seven mils. Which is an increase of one point eight eight nine mils from this year. A little hard to see, I don't know if it can make that bigger, but that's a historical graph for the last five years of the. Property tax levy for the City of Abilene. The, uh, starting from the left in twenty twenty one, the levy was fifty one. Milles. In twenty twenty two, it went down to forty nine point eight five mils. Then in twenty twenty three, it was fifty point one six eight. And twenty twenty four is forty seven point three five six. Uh, this year it's forty five point six four eight, and our proposal is forty seven point five three seven. The average over that timeframe has been forty eight point five nine four. Uh, even though only we're dealing with six years of data, the median is forty eight point six nine four, or a difference of a tenth. And generally, a median, um, is used to throw out any higher or lower numbers that could skew the, the analysis. The next slide just shows that, uh, under the proposed mil rate. That, uh, a residential home valued with an appraised value of $50,000 would see a $10.86 cent per year increase, or 91 cents a month. The median, uh, average of $139,000 home would see a $30 increase or 252 a month. And a $200,000 home would see a $43 increase, or about 366. Uh, then the commercial, a $75,000 commercial building would see $35, 174,082, and a 300,000 would see 148. $148 increase in property taxes from the increased one point eight eight nine mils. And on the bottom, uh, in case anybody wants to memorize it, that's how the formula used to determine the tax increase. Is the appraised value times the assessment rate. Residential is assessed at eleven and a half percent, commercial at 25%, vacant lots at 12%, and agriculture land at 30%. Um, and then multiply that times the increased levy and divide it by a thousand. I just wanted to get a little background on the revenue neutral.
Thank you. Do we have anyone, um, else from the public that would like to speak during this public hearing? You just state your name and address for us?
Jackie Webb, fourteen oh nine North Van Buren. And I just want to say the taxes are going higher and higher and higher. Anything y'all can do to maintain budget neutral and not just go up because you can. If you go into private sessions and check every avenue of making wise decisions and keeping things reasonable. That's one thing, but I would really like you to do the best you could. To look for right ways not to have to increase taxes more.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak during this public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. And we will move to item nine B, consider approval of resolution number zero nine zero eight two five dash one, a resolution of the City of Abilene, Kansas approving the levy of a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Interim City Manager Quin- Quinde, excuse me.
City to exceed the revenue neutral rate of forty three point five one five mils. As a reminder, the revenue neutral rate means that if the city plans to spend $1 more, uh, in property tax than the prior year, that, um, it must exceed the revenue neutral rate or adopt a resolution allowing you to do so. I just want to point out that the twenty twenty six budget was prepared in a pretty condensed timeframe. The data is central to our discussions. The, um. Twenty twenty six budget reduces personnel by not filling, uh, two positions. Cutting all expenditures that are not core, and there are no investments in capital improvement or equipment, um, the rest of this year or in twenty twenty six. And the. Request to increase by one point eight eight nine mils was to get the city back on a fiscal path. Where in the past, you've always had about 1.5 to 1.8 million dollars in reserves in case something bad were to happen. Without going to the forty five, the forty seven point five three seven mil that is recommended. You would not have, you'd be zero, you'd have no carryover, which means that if your revenue. Were to drop, or you have an unexpended expense, you couldn't cover it. The proposed mill levy. The people cuts, the no cost of, uh, living adjustment for employees, no merit increases for employees, no equipment purchases in twenty six, or no capital improvement purchases in. Uh, projects in twenty twenty six, other than the city's already obligated for, such as the Sea Clip Projects, or the ones that the city bonded money for. Are allowed, and that only. Projects a $290,000, uh, reserve or cash carryover for the general fund. So that's the, uh, the reason is to get the city back on a path where it's. Financially stable again. Any questions?
Any questions for staff? Oh, yep, you can speak at this time, sorry. Say your name and address for us again.
Jackie Webb, fourteen oh nine North Van Buren, Abilene. Um, I don't understand, since we voted twice not to do the. Ball diamonds and stuff like that. And we had our budget planned, knowing that it was voted down. And I, I want to understand why you guys could go ahead and vote it in against the public opinion, but then go ahead and raise above budget neutral. To outweigh the public vote.
It, it was approved by the public in February of this year, in a public vote.
The proposed tax levy covers, uh, the general fund, debt service, fire apparatus, um, the, the library and the airport, although the airport's receiving no levy this year. Due to budget constraints, um, and capital improvement is receiving no money this year, so the. All the other funds, which would be, um, the utilities, enterprise funds, water, uh, wastewater. Stormwater and recycling do not use property tax at all. General fund is for, uh, police, fire, administration, community development, inspections, uh, those types of departments. The, um, money for the ball diamonds. It's my understanding that the voters approved a. it's my understanding that the voters approved a sales tax, and the limit for the ball diamonds was set at four million dollars, because that is what the sales tax would generate to cover annual debt. So that should have zero impact on property taxes. The sales tax should pay for itself.
Okay.
Jackie Webb, fourteen oh nine North Van Buren. And has this taken into consideration that the plan wouldn't interfere with the rodeo grounds, where the, the original plan was saying, the bid you got from Wichita that showed all the changed streets and everything, that it would take out the rodeo contestants parking by putting in the ball diamond stuff further?
Commissioner Witt, you're on that committee, I'm sure you can probably answer that pretty easily.
Yeah, we, so I'm on the committee that's working on the ball fields. We've involved the rodeo board in our discussions. And in recent meetings, they've had a member come to our meeting. So everything we're doing is in coordination with, with the rodeo board. And the fair rodeo, rodeo is a committee of the fair board. So we're, we're doing things where it can be a win-win for both. And current plan is where some of the four fields of that quad, to eventually, all of those are going to go away and get moved up around the rec center, so that then that area can be contestant parking, and that's, they're a lot more excited for that because then contestants don't have to cross the road. So again, trying to make win-wins out of that situation.
Do we have any further questions for staff on this resolution?
I have just a couple of things here, I think this is probably going to come up under D on the adopting and appropriation of the budget, but I had proposed eliminating two positions, and I think there's currently a third that is kind of being operated as a hybrid. Those positions are the deputy chief of police position, the tenth patrol officer position, which my understanding is that's also vacant. The deputy chief of police position is vacant at this time. And then the maintenance manager has been kind of covering in public works, and so I had, I would make the proposal that we remove that position. Those three eliminate two hundred and eighty thousand dollars out of the budget. And then I'm also recommending that we decrease city commissioner and mayor pay to one dollar a year, for a savings of twelve thousand five hundred and ninety five dollars, and a savings of two hundred and ninety two thousand nine hundred and ninety five. I will be voting against exceeding the revenue neutral rate, but I'll bring those up again when we get to the budget.
Do we have any further questions for staff on this resolution? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number Zero Nine Zero Eight Two Five Dash One, Resolution of the City of Abilene, Kansas Approving the Levy of a Property Tax Rate Exceeding the Revenue Neutral Rate.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
I'll discuss more on, once we get to the budget.
Hearing none, I will move to roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
No.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Nay.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is nine C. Sorry, I'm making sure I'm in the right spot here, yep. Nine C, Public Hearing for the Purpose of Hearing and Answering Objections of Taxpayers relating to the proposed use of funds and the amount of ad valorem tax for the proposed 2026 budget. City Manager Quinde?
I don't have thirty five PowerPoint slides, so I'll be brief. The 2026 budget was prepared during a time of ongoing financial constraint within the city and is designed to meet the operational requirements and to lay the foundation for long-term fiscal recovery. In July of this year, department directors implemented immediate cost control measures to stabilize finances, including a hiring freeze, reduced operating expenditures, referral of equipment purchases. And these reductions were not the result of excess funding in the budget, but rather a necessity to pull back to the pair minimum required to sustain core services. As a result, important activities such as preventive maintenance, staff training, technology upgrades, and other investments that support professional development, retention, and growth have been deferred, leaving the city less flexible and more vulnerable in the future. The 26 budget focuses resources exclusively on essential services, provides for reduction in workforce, eliminates cost of living and merit-based pay adjustments, and limits capital spending to previously obligated projects and eliminates all equipment purchases, such as vehicles. Twenty twenty six budget positions the city on a path towards financial recovery. Full stability will take time and continued discipline, and the department directors and city staff should be recognized and commended for their exceptional efforts to reduce costs, maintain services, and continue serve the community with integrity, which has been central in navigating today's challenges and will remain vital to building a stronger, more stable future for the city. Data is central to discussions that we've had. I appreciate the commissioners' proposals to eliminate two or possibly three positions. To get to that two hundred and eighty thousand dollars he talked about would require eliminating three. No analysis has been presented showing how the staffing cuts would affect service delivery, overtime costs, burnout, and even turnover. A pragmatic systems thinking approach requires studying downstream impacts of all decisions made. Both revenue neutral and leadership accountability factors combine to shape the city's current financial situation. I can't speak to past commissions or city managers, but as the interim city manager, my focus is on solutions. A fiscally prudent recovery path, best practices, and transparency to set up future leadership for successes. I think the constructive debate is great, but I encourage in evidence-based decisions that will serve the community effectively. And I'll stand to answer any questions.
I'll also open the, officially open the public hearing, now that you've spoken.
Mr. Quinde, I appreciate your input. I think we've had this back and forth, and I don't mean to belabor it here, but while you have stated that data is important, we have absolutely no data to justify any of our current staffing levels in any of our departments, frankly. And so as such, I don't think that, I think one way to get that data would be to, to try it and see what happens. And I think that if we have, if we develop a need in the future for those positions, where we can see that there is a need, I think maybe at that point, we attempt to get the, the funding, whether it's through grants or other avenues to do that. Well, there's a, something called Hitchens razor, that is, which can be asserted without evidence, can be dismissed without evidence. And I think that absolutely applies here. So I've looked at some other similarly sized, and I know we've, I don't want to belabor the point and go back and forth on this, but size of a city is not always indicative of a police force or fire force, or, or any of the other public works, et cetera, within it. But I think, knowing that, I don't think that there's a huge risk to the safety of our citizens by eliminating those positions, as I have suggested. I will point out, I, I didn't get mentioned in, in your speech, so I do want to point it out that I'm asking our, my fellow commissioners to share the burden as well. Unfortunately, the total for us is twelve thousand six hundred dollars a year. So there's not a lot of blood to get from that turnout, but I am all in favor of squeezing as much as we can out of it, so. I think, if I'm not mistaken, we have until October one to pass a budget, is that correct? Yep. I'm open to any ideas from certainly any city staff or fellow commissioners to achieve the goal of cutting taxes. And I guess just to put the idea out there, I'm willing to table this if there's some more discussion that can happen that would be productive.
And just to clarify, this is just the public hearing for the budget, we're not, this isn't the actual budget item?
Yeah, again, I don't think it matters where it lands in our discussion, I think it's an important discussion to have, though.
Do we have anyone else in the public that would like to speak on this item during, while the public forum is open?
I'd like to respond just a couple of, of points that the Commissioner Kohlhoff and I've had some good debates back and forth on what works, but I would suggest that the evidence based is the level of service that the public is enjoying now, based on the staffing levels they have. Eliminating physicians and then seeing what happens and responding accordingly, and that's paraphrasing, does have the opportunity that if the commission decides, no, that's not what we want, we need to bring those people back, then you're going to have to raise taxes again, but not one point eight eight nine mils. You're going to have to raise them likely even more to make that happen. So my recommendation is that the department directors and city staff have done a lot of work to cut costs this year, just so the city did not exceed or had more cash carryover. When I first got here in July, it was projected to be about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the general fund. Because of cuts, we got that up to about eight hundred and fifty thousand. And then we eliminated one police officer position and one public works position this year, because through discussion and how that would work internally, we thought we could handle that, but cutting three more positions, we don't know what those are, and it's just a risk.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak on this item while the public hearing is open?
Jackie Webb, fourteen oh nine North Van Buren. Budget has always been trained to us as budgeting and not exceeding. And I, I just don't understand. If you want to have surplus to go into next years, you must have over budgeted the year before. I don't understand this. Going over budget so we can have excess for the next year. If we don't have it, and you've already raised taxes significantly year after year, I mean, my personal property tax has never gone down. Can, can you explain why we want to go over budget? I just don't understand that concept.
There are
What is budget?
There are a couple of things to address there. There is a required minimum carryover, is that fifteen percent? Yes, fifteen percent that we are required to have in our carryovers. We, we did. Do you, there was a, you had a great explanation.
I'm just going to use this for illustration purposes, but assume that a taxing entity levies one million dollars in property tax. Doesn't mean on January first that they receive a million dollars in property tax. What you are basing the budget on is an estimate of what the valuation of the city is that you received from the county clerk in July. After people appeal their valuations of their homes or their property, that may go up, it may go down, so you're just working with an estimate. But assume that the million dollars you, you're going to get, everything works out and there's no adjustments. Then you have delinquencies, which can be anywhere from three to fifteen percent. People don't pay their property taxes. So assume a five percent delinquency, that you're going to get nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's, you don't get everything you're asking for all the time. Even if the city commissions, or the budget was revenue neutral at forty three, whatever that number is, it would still be staff's recommendation to pass a resolution to exceed revenue neutral because of the fluctuations, you're working with estimates, the valuations don't get certified to November, but you have to have the budget to the state before then. So you pass that, because if you don't, then you may lose out on revenue. The only other explanation I can say is, I have three adult daughters with their own families, and I've always taught them to have a rainy day fund. You know, my dad taught me that you should always have enough money set aside that if you don't have a job, you can cover yourself for three to six months. What the mayor's talking about is the city's, has its own policy requiring fifteen percent of budget revenues that are in reserve. So that way, if there are interruptions in revenue streams, that they have that rainy day fund. Over the years, that has been depleted down to below fifteen percent. So just like my daughters, if they don't have a rainy day fund and their AC unit at their house goes out, where are they going to come up with that eight thousand or ten thousand dollars? They either have to go to the bank, or they have to go to mom and dad. I should say that I hope it's the former, not the latter, but it's always and I'd be happy to do it. But the city can get to the point where they, they just can't go out and say, well, we don't have enough money. They can get to a point where they have to issue what's called no fund warrants. Means you're going to pay your vendors and say, we'll pay you when we get the money someday. That's just going to drive up, up the cost.
If you could, if you could please use the podium if you're going to ask questions.
Jackie Webb, fourteen oh nine North Van Buren. What citizens of Abilene, what percent have the ability, when you guys go for budget neutral, to go ahead and have our taxes go up? When we too have budgeted and tried to stay within our budget? It's, it's just, the city commission isn't doing what the people of the city of Abilene are doing to try to budget and live within our means. And money doesn't grow on trees, and if you don't have a surplus and you've taken our surplus, we sure don't have a surplus either. So please try to stay under your budget or budget appropriately for next year. Look at every avenue, and I'm glad you're doing that. Go to study, check, and check again, use all of your ideas. It appears that there's some ideas here, but I want to know, with the rest of you guys, what are your ideas of staying within what you voted to budget last year? And have over, overdrawn that?
And just a point of clarification there, too, is the last two budgets that the city has passed have been revenue neutral. So if your property taxes have gone up, it's from different entities, not us. So I just wanted to highlight that, I know I pulled some calculations. From twenty twenty to twenty twenty five, our property tax levy dollars have increased from two point nine five seven million to three point oh five seven million, about a hundred thousand dollars. And, and I didn't pull the schools, but I pulled the counties, and there's this increase from twelve million, four hundred and forty two thousand, one hundred and seventy two dollars to fourteen million, seven hundred and thirty nine thousand, four hundred and eighty eight dollars. So ours have increased just a hundred thousand and, a hundred thousand, four hundred and two dollars. Their, theirs has gone up two million, two hundred and ninety seven thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. So it's important, and I'm not saying this to belittle the county or school district or anything like that, but it's also important to make note of which entities are imposing that property tax increase. I know it, you know, you get your bill, it's just a number. It doesn't break down who's doing what, so it's correct. And that's the, that's the issue, even when we have stayed revenue neutral, your property tax bills have still increased because of other entities that were not revenue neutral the last couple of years. So it's, I wish that form broke it out a little better on your final tax bill, but it doesn't. So you really have to be careful of that.
I will say that, just as an example, where I worked before, for twelve years, we lowered the, the levy. We were never revenue neutral, but that wasn't a thing, I think, until twenty two or twenty three. And our revenue increased over that time about two hundred thousand dollars, which proportionally isn't much at all. But my tax bill went up every year and still goes up. As the mayor said, there are other entities out there that have levies that they, they do. But the value of my house has also gone way up. So it's a combination of what that levy is and what the value of a person's property is that is a factor. So it's a combination of what that levy is and what the value of a person's property is that is a factor. The other one, thing I wanted to point out is that all the city staff members, myself and the governing body, all pay taxes, we're all cognizant of that cost to the, to the public. But for the last two years, Abilene has been revenue neutral, which means they've not brought in a dollar more, but their costs have gone up. And I'm sure that you may have noticed when you've gone grocery shopping, what I like to refer to as shrinkflation, what you used to get. Prices may stay the same, but what you're getting is less. Staying revenue neutral, your price will stay the same, but the services that the citizens will receive in the city will become less. And that's the question is, you know, you can stay revenue neutral, but what services should we cut? What's not important to the, to the community and to the taxpayers? When my wife and I were young, long, long time ago and raising young kids, we had to make choices at the grocery store, just like everybody else. And those are the types of choices that have to be made when you're talking about property taxes and what services. And I believe Commissioner Witt asked that a couple of times at the last couple of meetings is what services would you like to see the city cut to get us to revenue neutral? I'm not sure if he's received any, but I've not received any comments from anybody saying cut this or cut that. But I do appreciate your comments and I understand the, your concerns. Cause you're welcome.
Do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak during this public hearing? That's, yeah, that's fine.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'll begin by saying it's somewhat disheartening that one of my first times I have to speak in front of you guys as the chief of police is to try to articulate and convince you guys not to cut police department staff by 20%. I will mention that there, there is a criminal element that exists in Abilene that most everybody in this room is not aware of, as the men and women of Abilene. Do everything we can to shield it from you guys, but believe me, it exists and it won't take long if we continue to cut and cut police services. I don't have any data to say that a city is less safe if it's got 12 officers versus 15 officers. Mostly because for the 20 years that I've served for the Abilene Police Department, our staffing levels have been 14. If you take it down to 12, I think that's, you're probably looking at mid, late 90s, maybe very early 2000 staffing levels. And you think of what the world we live in today looks like versus what it looked like in the late 90s, early 2000s. Police officers are asked to be cops. They're asked to be marriage counselors, therapist, social workers and everything in between. The expectation a community has on a police officer today is not nearly the same as it was in the late 90s, early 2000s. We can't police the same in 2025 as we policed in 2015, as we policed in 2005, and certainly not as we, we policed in 1995. I understand there's tough decisions to be made. Commissioner Kohlhoff, I respect your responsibility and when it comes to the budget. Just asking you to, to think about what the potential of cutting police services could look like for the community. So thank you guys.
If you don't mind hanging out there for just a second. I don't really have much data other than I think your first and only report that you presented. It's probably been a month or so ago. So I've got that pulled up here and I, again, I don't have any other data, so this, I'm going to present the data that I've got. What you, what you told us is there were 515 calls for service, 94 traffic stops, 13 arrests, 70 animal complaints, 17 alarm calls, 16 mental health calls and 9,558 miles driven. This was July, so you had nine fireworks calls, it looks like, assisted with a public event and then at six nights of the free fair and then school resource officer Kabiski doing some stuff with the school. So I mean, that's, that's the data that I have to look at.
And that's not a comprehensive list of all of our activities. It certainly hits some of the highlights, so.
Yeah, I, I understand that too, of course. I guess my question to you, and I guess I think it's, my question really for every department head is where can we be more efficient? And I'll tell you, my goal with presenting this is certainly I can understand if you feel attacked or like I'm picking on you, but really it was not to cut any positions and those were the positions that are currently vacant.
Understood.
And I would say, I think, you know, I think we just need to look at those and find those efficiencies through natural attrition so that we're not cutting any, any people's jobs. I mean, that's really my goal. And so again, I'm, I would ask you, I actually meant to reach out to you here for this, this weekend to discuss this before this meeting face to face, but unfortunately that didn't, that didn't happen. So I certainly appreciate you addressing us here.
And I will invite any commissioner, I would invite, come do a ride along. You don't know what officers do. You think they just drive around, sit there, run radar. Come ride. Come ride. I'm not hard to find. We'll hook you up as long as you want to. We'll make it happen. So anything else?
I don't believe so. I would just, again, I would ask my fellow commissioners to consider tabling this for a meeting and going back to speaking with police chief Wilkins and other department heads to see if we can find more efficiencies to do this. Again, this was just a proposal. I don't for any reason think it's the best one, but it is one that gets us allows us to actually cut taxes, allows us commissioners to suffer along with everybody else. And I'm open to any constructive feedback on that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments during the open public hearing?
I just have one more that staying revenue neutral this year may look good on paper, but like the chief said, you're going back to 1990 staffing levels for the police department when crime is changed. And then when you're developing the 2026 budget and you want to stay revenue neutral, where are you going to cut? Because we've cut everything we can. As far as equipment and capital improvements, there are none for this year and none for 2026. No police cars, they'll drive them longer. And the chief made me think of that when people think that the police are just sitting somewhere running radar. They have mobile data terminals and when they're sitting in that patrol car, they're likely writing a report. But they're doing two things. They're writing a report in their vehicle, but they're also being deterrent, deterrent to people because they see somebody and they think they're running radar. I'll quit beating a dead horse.
Fire Chief Cale Strunk, I just wanted to kind of remind everyone, public included. Everyone always seems to forget what they're paying for when, when they aren't needing our services. Good example, that is the snowstorm we had back in January. That, that reminded a lot of folks what they paid for. Public Works, all the road, Cruz County, state level, emergency services were out three or four days straight and that stuff. And everyone comes together and sure wants to thank us then, but when it comes tax time, budget season, everyone's wanting to shave everything back, but the the time comes, they need us, they're going to be glad that they pay for it. And with, just look around the world, country, inside the states, anywhere from wildfires to school shootings. I mean, that's what you pay emergency services for. So just a good reminder to think back at that. That's what you're paying for in funding, so.
You have the benefit of, Abilene's growing. You have housing being built. Means your population's growing, spread the tax base out. And that growth requires additional services. Now I'm off my horse.
Yeah, that is a valid point though. I had noticed that when we got our estimated valuations back for the city at an increase of, what was it, 3.3 million dollars? And a third of that was attributed to new, new development, new growth. So that is, it does draw more girls, additional services. You have more customers that you're needing to service. More water lines you're needing to fix or streets you are needing to fix. But it's a good problem to have. It's much better than going the other direction and, and 1.1, a little over 1.1 million dollars was, is a little bit shocking to me because that was the biggest number I've ever at, at least since I've been in this role, I've seen on a valuation sheet for the city of Abilene, which it is exciting to see the housing projects happening both, well, we've got quite a few of them and we'll talk about one specifically here in a little bit later in the meeting, but I, I did want to make that note. I made sure to, to write that down as well, so I could, could make that point, so.
I just want to point out, I'm not sure anybody knows the exact number, but my understanding is that Abilene has been 6,800 people since 1800. And my understanding is it's actually gone down in the last few years. So I'm not sure, again, that, that number is accurate, short of a census. I think it's just somebody's guess. But I don't know that it's a fact that Abilene is growing, at least in population.
Yeah, I was just specifically talking to, about new development on that valuation notice. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak during this public hearing? Okay, saying none, I will now close the public hearing. We will move to item 9D, consider approval of ordinance number 25-3464 in ordinance adopting and appropriating the 2026 annual budget of the city of Abilene, Kansas. Interim City Manager Quin Day.
Ordinance approves the 2026 annual budget as presented. It authorizes interfund transfers, they're identified in the schedule of transfers in the budget and authorizes the city manager to implement and administer within budgetary funding limits, the adopted city budget in 2026. And it is considered an appropriation of money, so, and the city manager is authorized to carry out the budget as it's a policy document.
Do you have any questions for staff on this item?
I thought I had one number here in your budget. I did want to double check with you if you don't mind. Try to give you a page number here. I apologize here. I'm going to keep, I'm going to try to find the pager. If somebody else would like to ask a question, please feel free to jump in.
Any questions in the meantime for city staff on this item?
Well, can I add something about the police department? And this is Amy. And I, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you loud and clear.
I work with abused children and I think our kids would be hurt if we did not have the right number of police officers. The kids I work with have been sex trafficked. They have been abused in every way possible. And it is the police department that is having to basically be that person that gets them out to the social worker. And so I do feel like we should not cut the police department. I feel like we have a vulnerable population and they need protection. And so I just think, I, I don't, I'm not in support of cutting law enforcement at all. I think they do a great job. I think as able bodied adults, it might be nice to say, oh, we can cut those, but you're not thinking of those vulnerable kids that they're helping.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions for city staff on this item? Commissioner Miller, I'm just curious, do you have any questions, anything you want clarified from staff?
No, I, I think, um, I think I'm pretty clear on, on what is needed and and I only, the only question that I've received from the public is how much will these increases cost a property owner in taxes per year? So Mr. Quin Day, if you could elaborate on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, the current levy is 45.648. The proposed levy is 47.537. That's an increase of 1.889 mils. So that would be for a $139,000 home. The annual difference would be $30 a year or $2.5 a month. As an example, a $200,000 home would be $43.45 a year or $3.66 a month. When I was looking at the budget certificate, what is being proposed for 2026 is 0.181 mils more than 2024. If you had a $100,000 home compared to 2024, it's a $2 a year increase. Now that may throw people off. I'm talking about the 2024 budget, which would be your 2023 taxes. It's a 0.181 increase from 24 to 26. And on a $100,000 home, that cost you about $2. But the city was revenue neutral in 2025, but that levy dropped. But the actual difference is 1.889 and those numbers I gave you are the, the estimates. And for people that want to calculate that on, that on their own, to figure out the tax increase, you take the appraised value of your property and you multiply it times the assessment rate. Your assessment rate for residential is 11.5%. For commercial, it's 25%. Vacant lots is 12% and agriculture is 30%. Then you multiply that times the increased levy and divide it by 1,000 and that's what the increase. How you figure out what that's going to impact your dollar wise.
On the, I'm sorry, it took me so long to find that here. This is on the debt service portion, debt service page of the budget. The expenditures on that are bond, principal and interest. And I was having trouble resolving that with the statement of indebtedness. I'm assuming it's only certain items on there that are, that are in that general fund debt service. Can you clarify that for me?
The statement of indebtedness doesn't differentiate if it is paid for by property tax or revenue from a utility. So the statement of indebtedness shows the Dawson Cottage Edition, which was debt incurred in 2015, $245,000. That one's paid off. Highlands Cedar East and Dawson was incurred in 2017. It'll be retired in 2040. It was $4.3 million and the annual debt service in 2026 is about $296,000. Now that would be a combination of utilities contributing towards that and property tax. So if whatever's allocated to water, wastewater would be paid for by the utilities, whatever is allocated towards streets would be from property taxes. Same thing with the H Street Water Treatment Plant and Sewer. That was incurred in 2019, 20-year debt. The amount issued was $2.7 million and it's about $205,550 a year. It's budgeted in 2026. But again, that's a combination of street, which would come from property tax, water treatment plant, which would come from water revenues and sewer, which would come from sewer revenues. And then the other one, the wastewater treatment plant was incurred on 2019 for just under $4 million. That is 532,125. That would be paid for from the wastewater treatment facility. And you have revenue bonds for the hospital. There's a public building commission that was created to bond for that. That was $17 million that was incurred in debt in 2017. The hospital pays about $1.5 million a year. They cover that, but if they were to ever default, the city has to cover it. And then the Sea Clip Industrial Park and Quality of Life temporary obligation, or temporary notes that were recently approved by the city commission is thirteen point nine million dollars. The C Clip portion would be paid from with property tax. The industrial would be a combination of property tax. Actually, there was a and then the park and recreation or the quality of life would be covered by the sales tax that was approved by the voters at the beginning of this year. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, that's a very, very thorough answer. I just couldn't make any of those add up to the total amount on the the debt service. So that's, I guess, was my confusion on that. Thank you.
In past years, debt service has been paid out of the operating funds from the various funds, general fund, water, wastewater. We are shifting to move those all into debt service. So it's more transparent to the commission and the public. What's being paid for from where and what percentage comes from each other.
I did. I did want to go back to Commissioner Miller real quick. Did that answer your question that you asked earlier?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I just I just wanted to make sure that City Manager Quin Day's response earlier answered your question that you asked.
It did, and I appreciate it, and I thank him for it.
Okay, thank you.
If the mayor would entertain it, I would like to make a motion to table and ordinance adopting and appropriating the twenty twenty six annual budget of the city of Abilene, Kansas until the September twenty second meeting.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Well, second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
So oh, go ahead, Commissioner Miller.
Oh, oh, sorry. My apologies. Isn't there a deadline that we need to have this submitted by, if I'm not mistaken? So if we send it out, is that going to create any problems for the cutoff?
No, holding until the twenty second of September, we should still meet the deadlines. Just from a practical standpoint, if this is tabled by a majority of the commission, I guess I would ask to what end? What would you like us to do in the meantime?
Thank you. That was the only question I had.
Fisher Wood.
Yeah, so one to clarify, Commissioner Kolov's proposed additional position cuts that would get us to below R and R. It's the deputy chief position and while we're the other two.
It is my understanding that there are actually two police officer positions that are not currently being held by anybody. So it would be one of those. And then there is a public works position that Mr. Alvarez, I believe, is covering for. And so I'm not sure how we would need to memorialize that, but to essentially eliminate that position and have him continue to cover that role.
And just to clarify, if that's what occurs, you'll be eliminating the police department by three total positions, the one already in effect. Then the two that are being proposed and the maintenance person assist with public works and the water department as needed. But by eliminating that position, then the maintenance work that he does would not get done. It would have to be hired out, which we wouldn't have the funds to do. And I know from visiting the various plants and when you visit the wastewater treatment plant, you can talk with the operators there. There are times when vendors come and can't fix something, but our maintenance guy is able to. That position has paid for itself multiple times on the things that he's able to do and fix.
I I seconded this because I am favorable to waiting more time to hear public comment on on this. I am still of the position and how I see the budget that we have before us is a budget that does make cuts. I mean, it does cut an officer position. It does cut a public works position. And so to cut the PD by an additional two, so totaling the cut to three positions, that's too extreme in in my perspective to do in one year. But if others, if people think otherwise, that cutting our PD force by three people in one year or twenty percent, like the chief said, if that's an acceptable risk to make, I'd like to hear if people think that's acceptable. Even though this budget in front of us does make cuts, it does increase taxes. But that's that's a product of the past two years of us being revenue neutral despite increasing costs of things. So and and to the point of the public works position that the facilities maintenance that Brendan Alvarez works on, where he also helps with public works in addition to facilities, that position was created because of those issues with facilities where you don't have a subject matter expert on staff to pay attention to those things. And then you get in situations where it costs more because you're having to bring vendors in to do that work. So and and that's one that I know know for sure. He's he's been the multi-tool of been able to work on all sorts of things throughout the city. So I just wanted to make sure that those position cuts were clear to the public. And if there's public support around it, I want to want to hear about it. But it's in my perspective, it's too extreme of a jump to make in the year risking that reduction in services. And what I have not heard from anybody is that people have an acceptance to reduce services. So for an increase in about four dollars a month, what this budget accomplishes, and this budget also has cuts to it. So we can very well find out throughout twenty twenty six that that was actually too much and that we do find that there's a demand for services that are getting cut in this budget. So that's also something potential. On the commissioner pay sort of thing, I'm in favor of it, but I'm not going to be here. So it's that feels weird, disingenuous for me to try to wave that as any sort of accomplishment. Not opposed to that. I would say it'd be more worthwhile just to zero it out because it would cost more to run payroll if than than anything. So with that, I see Jackie's raising her hand. So if you want to come up to the podium.
Jackie Webb, fourteen oh nine North End, Buren. I voted and you five are my city commission right now. And I appreciate each one of your wisdom, each one of your diligence and being to these meetings over the years, your knowledge of all these different areas. I appreciate you so much and I really would appreciate even more, Trevor, if you would give two or three ideas of ways that you think the budget could be cut. And Wendy, Brandon, Amy, same thing. If we had five commissioners that each had three or four things that could be discussed as options, I think we could pick our brains and really do something positive instead of just taking one person or John's investigation and best efforts of what, according to my vantage point, is a way that we could make budget neutral. Each one of you guys have a good brain. I challenge you next meeting. Bring all those ideas forward and see where that goes.
I do just want to clarify, it's really not my goal to cut services or really cut any staff. It is my goal to cut the budget, and I really think the best way to do that is kind of to your point. It's there's probably a hundred things that are, you know, a couple thousand dollars that we need to look at. Unfortunately, we have a very short budget period, as Mr. Quin Day noted earlier, and this is a quick and efficient way to do that. I would I would love to hear a better plan that doesn't cut any staff at all. And again, that's why I've asked for more time. I don't at all think that my proposal is the best. I do think it achieves one of the goals, but not all of them.
Thank you.
Martin Schneider, seven twenty three, twenty six hundred Avenue, Abilene, Kansas. Trevor, you ask, I'll say I'm not in favor of cutting any more staff. And cutting staff in the police department or the fire department and then collecting the data from cutting staff, to me, that's too high a risk. The welfare of our families and our children are the utmost highest important to me and my family. And so decreasing law enforcement or or fire protection, I don't think should be an option to try to gather data to see if that's efficient or not. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Quin Day, I think you were.
I was just going to say that probably in August, after diving into the budget of what was, what is, and where we can go, I told the commission that my job was to find solutions. And the cuts that the department directors and I thought that could be made without negatively impacting services were made. I also mentioned that this would not be solved in a year. It would take a few years to do that. If you wanted to solve it a year, you'd have to raise twenty mils or thirty mils, which nobody would recommend. Staying revenue neutral, regardless if it's cutting people or whatever the choice is, that's not a path to fiscal stability. I can't think of a better or a more professional way of saying it, but staying revenue neutral, you're just kicking the can down the road. You're going to be in the same boat next year. Answering the same questions and trying to figure out, well, how do we do it? Because the intent's going to be, we want to stay revenue neutral next year, too. You're going to have to cut more. And at some point, you're just going to have to cut services. So that's my professional assessment is it's just kicking the can down the road for the sake of saying we're revenue neutral.
Do we have any, excuse me, do we have any further discussion on this motion to table? City Manager Quin Day, interim, I did have one question. Do you have, and I don't expect you to have it in front of you, but do you have like a highlight sheet of the cuts that have already been enacted?
Just from memory, I can tell you that I told the police chief that he could not fill one position. I told the public works director, they could not fill one position. Those are two. All equipment purchases, there were several vehicles that were scheduled to be purchased this year. The departments were told they could not, but we didn't have to transfer the money from the general fund to the Equipment Reserve Fund. And then capital projects were delayed or held off. And one example is the air conditioners at the community building have been out for, my understanding is, more than a year. And that's just making the other ones work even harder. And you're looking at sixty or seventy thousand dollars to fix those. We pushed everything back just so those can get fixed because otherwise you're looking at, you know, several hundred thousand dollars to replace all of them. We have relooked at almost every contract that we have. For example, our internet and IT contract is almost a hundred thousand dollars a year. So we started negotiating with them to reduce that. They've agreed to reduce that by ten percent. And then we can look at it again in twenty six for further negotiation. We worked with the telephone provider and they were able to reduce that by a thousand dollars a month. And if we want to take ownership of the equipment, they would reduce that by fifty percent a month. So we've looked at the cleaning contract to clean the senior center and the civic center, I believe, City Hall. I canceled that. That would save twenty seven thousand dollars a year. We are looking at hiring a part time person to clean the civic center and the senior center because those are public facing facilities. And in the meantime, the department heads and myself have been cleaning those facilities just to save money. I mean, I could go on on the costs and the things we've done. You know that I, although it has nothing to do with property taxes, but the the water utility, we're selling water to every customer class except for those outside of the city limits for less than it costs us to make. We sell water to the rural water district. It was at a dollar forty four per thousand gallons. It just got moved up in January to a dollar eighty per thousand gallons, but it cost the city five dollars and seventy four cents to make a thousand gallons. So I mean, those are the types of things that we're working on. Same with the sewer rates. I mean, I could go on, but those are some of the highlights. And I I know we keep on talking about mill levy, but I forgot to point out that the year over year change from twenty twenty two to the proposed budget of twenty twenty six is actually a net decrease of three point four, six, eight mils in that timeframe. Twenty twenty one, the levy was fifty one point zero, zero, five. We're proposing forty seven point five, three, seven. So if you've been paying property taxes in Abilene for the past five years, what we're proposing is a net change of lowering three point four, six, eight mils.
Well, I agree with your assessment. Nobody pays their bills in mils. And I think that time period that you mentioned, we were so drunk on COVID money, we didn't know what to do with ourselves. So there was a lot of budget savings and availability ability to avoid raising taxes during that period of time. We, I think, are just now in twenty twenty five getting the hangover from being cut off of COVID money last year. I certainly appreciate your insight. I appreciate everything that you've done. I think you've made some important changes. I don't I don't want to downplay those efficiencies. I'm disappointed that some of those things weren't happening previously, but I do think that those are important important changes for us operationally. And I think you've done an awesome job of addressing a lot of the things that unfortunately we had the opportunity to address coming through this room and then just chose not to, specifically with the IT services. We were basically held hostage for that eight thousand dollars or whatever it is a month rather than having a good faith negotiation with our vendor on that. So I appreciate everything that you've done. Like I said, I'm only I'm making this recommendation that we table this for two weeks and see if we can find anything else. I think another important point, the COVID money, I guess, to hit on that, I think there's there's tons and tons of other grant programs out there. I believe you mentioned in your previous position, you were able to help keep the mill levy down by getting funding from the state or federal dollars. Essentially, our tax money, bringing that back into Abilene to help offset a lot of that. And so I think that that's something when you ask, you know, what are we going to do in twenty twenty seven? You know, I think those are the things that we need to be doing now so that we can prepare for twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven so that we can come back in front of this body and say, hey, we're not raising your mill levy and here's why.
And I will say that in those twelve years, we did acquire thirty million dollars in grants. But I don't see that happening in twenty six or twenty seven or even twenty eight with the changes at the federal government. Just because they've all dried up. Congressional directed spending requests that we've had in as a city here in Abilene for public safety items. I know other cities across that are just getting cut out because they're trying to reduce their spending in in Washington. Though while the grants are still out there, they're not going to be there from my perspective like they were those ten years that the team that I worked with were getting those. And I I know we disagree on this, that revenue neutral is not, well, we agree on this, revenue neutral is not the only reason the city's in its financial condition that it's in. It's a combination of revenue neutral decisions that were made and accountability. But I will put this out there for any state elected official, representative or senator. If the two tax lids and revenue neutral were intended to save local people property taxes, then the state wouldn't have exempted themselves from it. The tax lid won in twenty seventeen, the one after that. The tax lid won in two thousand seventeen, the one after that, and now revenue neutral, they've, they have exempted themselves because it looks good politically to say we're saying revenue neutral, but it's not practical when you have rising costs. Like I said, if you look at business, and I know everybody here is a business person, but when you go buy a jar of mayonnaise, it's not the same size as it was ten years ago, but it costs the same. And that's the best analogy I can use is that if the city of Abilene decides it wants to stay revenue neutral, your services are going to shrink. There's just no question. Are we going to find two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in savings in the next two weeks? No. Even if I spent more than the twelve or fourteen hours I spend a day here for the three days, I don't think so. I think the department heads, the supervisors, they've all done a great job looking for those efficiencies. And this budget in two thousand twenty-six is the bare bones budget because of past decisions, and it's going to take a few years to do it. And that's why I said, without being disrespectful, staying revenue neutral, we're just kicking the can down the road. And you're going to be in the same position that you are today, a year from now, trying to figure out what are we going to do?
Again, I know we're, we're kind of going a little bit back and forth here, and I don't mean to belabor this, but really our tax, our ad valorem tax is only, what, fifteen, twenty percent of the budget? And so while I, I hear what you're saying, I don't know that I absolutely agree with you that staying revenue neutral in perpetuity would necessarily affect the services provided in the city because of the other potential options for revenue. So I'm just, I want to make sure we maximize that and again, keep the accountability and keep our property taxes reasonable for our citizens.
And the city has addressed revenue with sales tax. Your sales tax now with the quality of life and the, the road and the local one and the county one, I believe you're close to ten percent. So there's a, a limit there. Now, you're not unusual to other cities. You go to, they're going to probably shoot me, but you go to Hayes, north of I-70th, all that development, you're paying ten, eleven percent. You go to Legends in Kansas City, you're paying eleven, twelve percent of sales tax. I'm not sure what other revenue streams that there are because the general fund should be separate from utilities. The utilities contribute to the general fund a percentage as if they were, if they were privately held, a franchise fee. But other than that, they should be kept separate.
Yeah, and that's what, that's another point that gets brought up when you're talking about alternate revenue streams is sales tax. And you, you know, CRs and within the city of Abilene itself, you're paying nine point three five percent. Six and a half percent of that goes to the state, one point seven five percent goes to the county, and we get one point one percent. So, and that's also another issue with, we're talking about property tax bills that come out. It doesn't break it down who's charging you what. I'm, I've heard from a lot of people in town that think we get the full nine point three five percent. And if we did, I think we could really do something with property taxes. But it's, it's those nuances and caveats that are important in decision-making, but aren't always sexy politically to speak about, which is unfortunate, but if you're kind of a policy nerd, it's fun for me, but nobody, you know, everybody else just glosses over. But those, those are just all important caveats of, you know, and you have to do a lot of research to know where exactly these funds are going, you know, which governmental entity they're going to. But it's, it's a lot easier just to make a blanket statement that you pay nine point three five percent sales tax in the city, the city gets all that money. And like I said, I wish that were the case, but it's not. And that's another point on what's kind of interesting to see between the local government level and the state level is, yeah, if the state were revenue neutral on their property tax levy of twenty mils to fund the schools, they would now be at sixteen mils. They recognize it's not going to work. And, and on top of that, you know, let's say I, you know, make eighty thousand a year and I go to ninety next year. Are they going to drop my income tax percentage to make sure I'm only paying, I'm paying the same amount of income tax? Absolutely not. That's what is frustrating. You see all of these news articles coming out about revenue neutral. But then on the other side, you have these news articles coming out about the state beating its revenue estimates. Very interesting phenomenon, so.
And last year, the legislature abolished the local ad valorem tax reduction fund, which was a mechanism from the nineteen thirties where the cities, counties, and the state agreed to share sales tax revenue. But during the Brownback era, that was stopped because the state was broke. And then every year they voted not to fund that. So that's another revenue stream that was cut off from the, the state legislature. But at the same time, they're asking us to do more. The fire chief does inspections that normally, twenty years ago, were done by the state fires marshal's office. Well, they don't have enough people, so they ask us to do it. Well, the chief's not going to say, no, I'm not going to do it because it's your job. He's concerned about public safety, so he's going to do it. And I'm not against the legislature. They're just like the city commission. They all have hard jobs to do. But sometimes the things that come out of Topeka and Washington just don't make sense at the local level.
Do we have any further dis, commission discussion? Just for clarification, I know we've had a lot of discussion. In the meantime, we are on a, we have a motion and a second to table voting on the budget until the next city commission meeting, which I can't remember what date that is exact, twenty,
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. I was going to say twenty-third, so I'm glad I looked. Do we have any further commission discussion on that?
Yeah, to, interim city manager Quinde said, asking what her expectation was with tabling this. My vote for a table here, I don't have any expectation from staff because it is of my perspective, again, that this budget in front of us does have all those cuts. It has find every, found everything that the department heads were comfortable with, where we wouldn't see a decrease in services to our community. There is still a risk of that with this budget. So the reason for my table is just to give another two weeks for the public to reach out. And again, it's my perspective that any additional cuts carry a high risk of reduction of services. And if there is a tolerance for that reduction, in what department, I want to hear, so.
Have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, and just once again to clarify, this is on a motion to table the budget until the September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five commission meeting. Hearing no further discussion, I will move to roll call vote, Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Hi.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
No.
Myself, yes. Motion carries.
I do apologize. I'm going to rejoin you remotely here. Thank you.
Hope if the mic was on. Our next item is nine E, consider approval of ordinance number two-five dash three four six two, an ordinance amending chapter five, section five dash four oh one of the city code of the city of Abilene, Kansas by adopting and incorporating by reference the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's fifty-second edition, two thousand twenty-five, and repealing existing section five dash four zero one. Police Chief Wilkins. And if you want to just give the overview that you gave during the discussion, the highlights of those change.
Every year, the Kansas League of Municipality publishes the standard traffic ordinance and the Uniform Public Offense Code. They're designed to provide a comprehensive traffic code and public offense code for Kansas cities. I presented the small changes to both the STO and the UPOC at the last study session. Those before you today for adoption.
Do we have any questions for Chief Wilkins?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two-five dash three four six two.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, we will move to roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff is absent. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is nine F, consider approval of ordinance number two-five dash three four six three, an ordinance amending chapter five, section five dash one zero one of the city code of the city of Abilene, Kansas by adopting and incorporating by reference the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas City's forty-first edition, two thousand twenty-five, with certain emissions and amendments thereto, and repealing existing sections, section five dash one zero one. Police Chief Wilkins.
Apologize, I jumped the gun and included both of them in my last dissertation. So again, the Kansas League adopts these every year, or I'm sorry, publishes these every year as a comprehensive list of both traffic, STOs, the traffic, Uniform Public Offense Code is criminal offenses that the cities can enforce. It's before you today for adoption.
Questions for Chief Wilkins? A little deja vu moment there.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two-five dash three four six three.
I'll second.
Take your pick, Shaila. Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Our next item is nine G, consider approval of moderate income housing notice of application. Interim City Manager Quinde.
Golden Belt West Family, multifamily LSC has requested the city apply for modern income housing grant to the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. This is something that the city did with phase one of their development. This is for phase two. What we're asking for is the commission's approval to submit a notice of application to the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. And what that does is give city staff and the developer access to a software program called Proquorum, is, which is where the application and all those documents are uploaded to. Later on in the work study, we'll go over the amended development agreement, the amended land purchase agreement, and then also a resolution authorizing city staff to apply for the MIH grant and a resolution supporting the Kansas Housing Income Tax credit application that Golden Belt will submit. Those will be on work study to bring back to you on the twenty-second. But for now, we're just asking that you authorize us to submit the notice of application for this project.
Basically voices our support.
This is, this one just gives us access to their software for the next steps.
Any questions for staff on this item?
Does this, this is Commissioner Kohlhoff. Does this item require a letter of support from the city at this stage or is that at the next stage?
That's the next stage and what we'll cover during the work study. This is just a notice of application that if approved by the commission and submitted, gives city staff and the developer access to the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation's software.
Do we have any further questions for staff on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve the moderate income housing notice of application.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? My only discussion is that I'm very excited to see it moving forward and excited for the, for the next ones to come hopefully after as well. So it's, it's starting to look pretty good, so. Hearing no further commission discussion, we'll move to roll call vote, Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Hi.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Our next item is nine H, consider approval of connecting links maintenance agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, for ten point eight three eight lane miles Buckeye Avenue in the city of Abilene, Kansas. Public Works Director Anderson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Brad Anderson, Public Works Director. We discussed this topic two weeks ago on discussion and we're here today to look for signing the agreement for the connecting link agreement and just the details of it. The old agreement was put in place by KDOT back in nineteen ninety-two. It covered ten point two five lane miles at two thousand dollars per lane mile for an annual payment of twenty thousand five hundred dollars. The new agreement that KDOT has sent to pretty much every municipality that has a state route that runs through it will now cover in the city of Abilene, ten point eight three eight lane miles at five thousand dollars per lane mile. So the annual payment will increase to fifty-four thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. It does have a agreement that it can no longer be ended within thirty days notice termination. And it's allowed only when a replacement agreement is executed. Lighting responsibilities up on the interstate still remain the same with, with KDOT, so. So we're just looking for an agreement to move forward with this.
I know I asked this last time, but not, you know, no rhyme or reason to when these come up for recalculation or?
No, I have no idea. I, I, I think I mentioned last time and, and, and I, still a true statement. I worked with this agreement in my previous job. It's the agreement that I always worked off of in the past with the cities that were within my area within district two. So for them to upgrade it, I feel is a good thing. It's probably just one of them situations where over the, over time, the, the cost of time, equipment, material, everything that we do in a maintenance issue on Buckeye, just general costs have increased. So it appears to me that they finally acknowledged that. And that's why the agreement was put. I don't know if they had any pressure from a municipality or how it got determined to upgrade it, but it definitely needed done.
I say some of those larger communities, when you have multiple state highways running through them, I could see how that could make a drastic difference.
Question for city attorney, Martin, any particular legal highlights along this agreement? I know, I think in our study session, you had some back and forth with the state on, on some items, so.
Sure. I spoke with the representative of KDOT. They were very helpful. Our questions primarily related to a few things that we didn't understand and that we wanted to make sure we understood what was difference, different between this agreement and the former agreement. Those two things related to, I think, number one, the previous agreement provided either party the opportunity to terminate and exit upon thirty days written notice. This has new language that doesn't really provide that. But after clarifying with the representative of KDOT, those provisions, including the one that addresses the right of termination, they only apply to the portion that KDOT will maintain and that they are not paying us to maintain. So as he explained it, you know, that we're always going to want them to maintain it. And if they don't, they're going to need to get us to agree otherwise. So this agreement that has essentially indefinite applicability only applies to their maintenance responsibility for that portion. I think it's just the highway that goes over Buckeye, that portion of it. There's another provision in there that just acknowledges that the other agreement, I forget how they referred to it, will remain in effect. We wanted to clarify what that other agreement is. And they had to run that one up the flagpole to get an understanding of what they meant there. But it has to do with, there's a resolution in this document set on the online packet. It's page one fifty-one. They're viewing that as the other agreement. And so he clarified that that will of course not be superseded by the separate agreement and both of them will continue to apply. The resolution is where they're agreeing to pay us to maintain a portion of their state highway. So that was it. It, I looked through it and didn't see any other areas of concern and we appreciate KDOT clarifying that.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve the connecting links maintenance agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation for ten point eight three eight lane miles Buckeye Avenue in the city of Abilene, Kansas.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Hi.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Our next item is nine I, consider approval of a loan application through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, KDHE, state revolving loan fund, SRF, for long-term. through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, KDHE, state revolving loan fund, SRF, for long-term low-interest financing to finance SCADA upgrades at the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant. Public Works Director Anderson.
Good afternoon, once again Commissioners, and, uh, we're back here to visit, um, the potential of the application, um, sending the application in for the state revolving loan fund. Um, if you remember from discussion two weeks ago, there were actually three SRF loans that were, um, applied for. The city of Abilene was approved, um, for two of those. Um, the two in, uh, in question are for the SCADA systems for both the, both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. Um, we're wanting to upgrade the, the PLCs, um, because of outdated, um, SCADA cards and, uh, we're having a hard time finding a vendor and replacing cards when needed on the system that we, uh, currently use off of. Um, so this would, uh, make major improvements and upgrade. Um, everything within, uh, basically the brains of the network. Um, we, um, the SRF rate was three point oh nine percent. Um, we did have a, uh, SCADA upgrade not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars for, uh, both the water and the wastewater. Um, I believe that, uh, I hate to put him back on the spot, but interim city manager Quinde, if there's any other technical questions, um, for the loan process, um, that doesn't mean we're one hundred percent in yet, but it does mean that when you're giving us authority to go ahead and apply um, for the loan and then see if we're officially good to go there. If he would have any other information he'd like to add.
Uh, Brad's correct. This is just authorizing the application. If the application is approved by KDHE, then we'd have to bring back the loan documents to the commission for final approval. And the three point oh nine percent was the, uh, rate as of July. But the, uh, state revolving fund loans are sixty percent below market rate. So hopefully the Fed will lower rates in September and they'll be even lower than that. But at that three point oh nine percent, uh, debt service on four hundred thousand dollars would be twenty-seven thousand dollars a year approximately.
The only other thing I would add is that, uh, because of the deadline of the loan application, we are on a timeframe. Um, so we, we did, uh, uh, without any commitment being, and, and it's okay, but we, we've kind of got things lined out um, for a budget hearing if necessary, um, on October, the October thirteenth meeting, I believe. There'll be a public meeting open to the public for questions about anything prior to that. But we do have them two dates set up, just so you know. Just so that we were staying with, in compliance of what the loan, um, makes us, uh, have for timelines.
And that keeps us in compliance with the application process.
That's correct.
As we discussed two weeks ago, it, it doesn't, um, I guess tie our hands in any way.
That's correct. Right now, we're just looking for, um, approval to continue on with the application at this point.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a loan application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, state revolving loan fund for long-term low-interest financing to finance skate upgrades to the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Kohoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item under heading ten items for discussion is, uh, ten A, Mid-America Sports Construction Agreement. Parks and Rec Director Tim Brook.
Good afternoon, and thank you for being willing to move this on to the discussion item for today. Um, just a little quick update. After the sales tax was passed, we, as a committee, um, issued an RFQ and started that process. We had ten firms respond to that. Um, after we did evaluation of those, we narrowed it down to five. They sent in proposals and requests for bids, um, did presentations, interviews. Um, it was a good turnout and a tough, um, process for us to go through, but we're excited that we, um, chose Mid-America Sports Con, uh, Construction. And Nick is here with them. If you guys have any questions of him. Um, our next step is we've been working on a contract with them and, um, decided our first, um, step with that needs to be signing a letter of engagement. Um, it's basically allowing us to meet with them a few times. We're thinking two or three probably is what we need. Um, there will be a cost to that, but that's also already been set into our overall budget. It won't come out of any other funding source. Um, and it's not to exceed five thousand dollars. So while it's within the city manager's signing authority, we wanted to bring it to you guys to have your approval, just because of the overall size of the project. Um, so we are just asking for approval on that today, um, so we can start having our meetings and then get that contract finalized, which will be brought back in front of you guys to approve.
Do we have any questions for staff on this item?
And like Kelly said, this is within the city manager's, uh, authority to approve, but because it kicks off a larger project, uh, we'd bring it to the commission. But because of timing, we ask that you, uh, approve the engagement letter today or in the alternative, um, identify any objections from the, um, commission and then I can sign that and move it forward. And then the fees not to exceed five thousand dollars will be deducted from the design fee also, so it's not an additional cost.
I appreciate you bringing it here just so we have an update on kind of where that process is as well. So it's helpful, helpful from our side, even if it doesn't need to, it is, um, very visible project, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'll just make a comment too on, on what this is doing. I, I do want to highlight how excited we were that it was that competitive of a process of having ten different entities and then ultimately five. Um, there's a lot of, lot of quality companies, um, that were wanting to do business with Abilene. And so it was a hard decision, uh, for our team, but, um, ultimately the committee of finding the great, greatest comfort and working with Mid-America, um, and helping us, one of the things that we learned the most in this process is how much we, we need help with, uh, to refine the scope, um, to really understand what's going to provide the best value, um, to Abilene, uh, matching the intent of that past, um, sales tax. So, um, excited to keep, keep moving this forward.
Are there questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, um, authorize a city manager to sign the engagement letter with Mid-America Sports Construction, um, for the ball fields complex.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff? Commissioner Kohoff, can you hear us? Looks like he got off. Um, myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item under heading eleven reports is eleven A department reports. Do we have any department reports? Okay. Next item is, uh, twelve A recess of our regular meeting. And are, is everyone okay to move directly into it? You want five minutes? Kelsey's saying five minutes? Okay.
Five minutes is fine. I'll, I'll make a motion to recess our meeting and for five minutes reconvene in here at six oh one.
I'll second that.
Hey, hey, guys, we need to finish the motion so we can recess. Commissioner Witt, do you want to, do you want to restate your motion so that way we, our timing can be correct?
Yeah, so made a motion to recess for five minutes. We'll reconvene in here at six oh two.
Okay. And I will second that motion to recess. Do we have any commission discussion? Hearing none, would you roll call vote? Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. We are in recess. I'll now call to order the September eighth, twenty twenty-five, city of Abilene, Kansas, city commission study session. Our first item is two B amendments to the development agreement and lot, lot purchase agreement for GBH West Multifamily LLC, Community Development Director Zook.
All right, in continuing discussions on Golden Belt West Multifamily LLC, they are moving forward to pursue phase two, um, building the second apartment complex. So we had our city manager attorney, or excuse me, city attorney Martin draft the amendments to the development agreement and the lot purchase agreement. Um, so for the, for the first one, the development agreement, um, we just revised it to add lot two, block three, which will be for the second units. Um, and then the bolded here includes phase two of the Golden Ridge Apartments within the defined development under the twenty twenty-four agreement. Um, affirm that all terms, conditions, and obligations of the twenty-four agreement apply to additional property in phase two project, including the RHID splits. Um, establishes a ninety day deadline to commence construction of the phase two project, beginning with the closing date of the purchase of the additional property. And clarifies that certain city obligations tied to phase one, specifically the mailboxes, um, sewer and water services and the detention pond will not apply to phase two. Um, and in that, so with the mailboxes, the city took over that. We just did, um, another, we're creating a a base, essentially a pullout in Golden Belt West, um, to do that. And we've also, um, the detention pond was already taken care of as far as phase two with the addition of that. So, let's see here. This will go before you guys at the next meeting, September twenty-second. Um, and then for the first amendment to the lot purchase agreement, that is basically extending the developers' deadline. We had it on lot two to expire December thirty-first of twenty-five. And that is, um, extending it to December twen- excuse me, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Um, for the main purpose of the KHITCs, that deadline is in January, so we will not know if they get the MIH and whatnot at that time. So we've extended that one year. And then also there is an amendment to section twelve, which in an error in the original agreement, didn't clearly state that lot ten was included, so we've added that to that accompanying table, um, for a future purpose. In that agreement, the first amendment to the lot purchase agreement will actually be a land bank item. So we will have a separate land bank item, excuse me, for that on the twenty-second as well. If you have any questions, I will try to answer them. Um, some of the developers on that team are here as well. Um, also, the attorney Martin, who drafted these um, documents, excuse me, the agreements, so.
Do we have any questions for city staff on this item? And, uh, hearing none, I guess Charlie or Martin, do you guys have anything that you want to add or state? Okay. Yeah. Uh, as, um, I told Martin walking up here, just very, very excited to see the project continuing and moving forward, um, and expanding. I think, uh, now we talked about earlier that one point one million in, in, uh, new development, new growth. That's exactly how this happens and, and, uh, having diversified housing, um, options in Abilene is key to that. And it's something that we have never really in, in, you know, in, in the past, it wasn't anything that we really focused on. And I think we've got a multitude of projects now that are serving that need and there is a need for, um, apartments, duplexes, um, not just single-family homes. And, uh, so I just wanted to convey my appreciation to you all for filling that need. No. If no further questions, we will move on to item two C, resolution authorizing preparation of an application to the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation for the Kansas Housing Investor Grant interim city manager Quinde.
Uh, before I start, I wanted to thank Carrie and her team for taking the lead on this project with Charlie, uh, and his team and, uh, the city attorney for Uh, and his team and, uh, the city attorney for working amongst all of them. Uh, Carrie and her team have taken, I mean, done line share of all the work, so it's very much appreciated. This resolution that's before you, we'll ask you to approve at the next, uh, regular meeting. It is, uh, finds that the governing body finds that there's a shortage of quality housing, uh, that is expected to persist. And that, uh, the shortage of housing is a deterrent to economic growth and development. And it's offers, uh, support to the developers' application for housing income tax credits to the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. So it's basically a resolution of support.
Do we have any questions for staff on this item? Okay. We will now move to Item Two D, Resolution Authorizing Preparation of an Application to the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation for the twenty twenty five Kansas Moderate Income Housing Grant, interim city manager Quinde.
Uh, specifically, the resolution authorizes us to prepare and submit the grant application, uh, on behalf of the city. Execute the MIH Grant Agreement if the application's approved, and to direct all necessary administrative actions to implement the grant. And execute any documents required to carry out the terms of the agreement. This will be brought back to the City Commission in two weeks for your consideration or approval.
Any questions for city staff on this item? Okay. Seeing none, we will move to Item Two E, Northeast Fifteenth Street Drainage Public Works Director Anderson. Excited for this update after we had a conversation with the property owner that has the storage units.
Yes, Commissioners, Brad Anderson, Public Works Director. So when we, uh, left here last time, um, uh, we were directed to kind of touch base with the, uh, property owners of the storage unit, um, kind of get their, uh, thoughts, opinions. Um, so actually, the very next day, um, Mr. Quinde and myself met with them. Um, gonna kind of be honest, I kind of feel that the, um, discussions kind of went in circles a little bit. Um, they acknowledged that there's, uh, an issue up there. Um, they did acknowledge that, uh, they understood that the, uh, fence was supposed to be put back up. Um, we asked questions about whether or not, um, just throwing it out as potentials. What their thought of removing the building or relocating the building would be. Um, they thought about that with, uh, what the revenue source for them is. And, um, if that would be something that they'd be interested in, and, uh, they were going to think about that. Um, they understood the drainage, um, issues coming off of their roofs with their downspouts. Um, kind of at a point where they weren't sure whether or not, at that point, on that particular day, they were going to do anything and, and what the legals would be, we couldn't really give them an answer of, of what us being the city could make them do. Um, they were kind of under the agreement or understanding that, uh, uh, the permit was originally, um, allowed for them to build and prior to the days when drainage studies and everything were mandated by the city. Um, um, basically, we, this would be the, uh, potential new owner, so the, the, uh, grandson is going to be taking over the property, Cody Sims and his wife. And now they're in the process of purchasing it, but they don't outright own it yet. Um, okay, after them discussions, I did have one other phone call conversation with them. And, uh, asked them kind of what their thoughts were, or if they had any more information of the building, and they really didn't. But, um, I guess their comment to me was that, um, they have hired a surveyor to actually stake the true property lines up there, and they're in the process of, uh, starting to get a contractor to actually put the fence up. Um, so those two requirements, uh, are the two things that they're doing as of right now. And they are not, at this point, um, going to be going any further with, um, any drainage control or anything like that with on their properties. And leaving their, leaving their building that was discussed about the potential moving, um, um, they're not interested in doing that at this time. So with that point, we got a little bit of clarification where they're at. Um, I guess from the city's aspect of things, um, I can feel for, for both parties, um, the Hookmans with, uh, the drainage issues, with, uh, the Simses, with, uh, them taking over the property and, um, operating in a in a capacity where they're basically inheriting, uh, a problem from the past. And so I, I don't know where to go with this. Um, city attorney Martin might be able to give in, but I, I, it almost just seems like we may be heading more towards, um, a civil and civil situation and then because where, where are we at? Where are our rights? Where, where can we, um, be held accountable? Um, tell them what to do, any of that. Uh, back to the original drainage study, in my opinion. Um, I think the drainage study, um, that was done for the two detention basins, um, in theory would work. But the whole issue where the two properties come together where it starts. Um, there is, and I agree with both of them, there's not really anything at the very top of where the water comes to the starting point controls for either of them at this point. Um, now, would something be done, need to be done up at the more of a starting point to deflect water? Um, potentially, but there again, um, where, where do we, where do we jump in and where do we do more? I think, uh, the city's good faith of wanting to take care of things. Um, just because of the residents up in that area can still be a valid point. But I think it just needs to be decided ultimately what, what way we want to go with everything.
We did ask the Olson to give us a price for the drainage basins that the downspouts could go into to slow that water down. Um, we haven't received that back.
Yeah, and, and that, that's kind of, um, once again, we're talking about coming off the downspouts, putting internal drainage structures within like a, a smaller catch basin. Like you would put in your backyard and then, um, the underground drainage tubing, um. Uh, we do not have that estimate, but at this point, um, they kind of mentioned they'd be interested in doing it, but it still doesn't hold, or not doing it, knowing what the price is of that. But then that's just an engineered estimate of what somebody would do. They did have a concern that that last storage building, when it was put in, was built on concrete rubble and debris, and then built up. So unlike somebody's backyard where you put in drainage, they're not just going to be able to trench a line open and lay a pipe in. They've, they've got, uh, a lot of debris in there that, that that's sitting in on, so, um, that could be another deterrent in their opinion. Um, so, so, uh, once again, I guess we're going to need to know kind of what your thoughts are and, and where we go and maybe, um, once again, unfortunately involve Mr. Martin with what? What his opinion on what would be the city's best, you know, do, are we tied to something basically at this point?
I think, uh, I don't want to speak for the city attorney, but his previous opinions to the commission was that, uh, the common enemy. That there is no city direct responsibility, um, that would be a civil matter between the two property owners. The West Drainage Basin and the East Drainage Basin, when presented to the the two families that we talked to, but I don't believe that they think that those are going to work. Um, and I understand the city's interest in solving this problem that's been going on for years, but with the caveat that um, you solve this one, there's a lot of places in Abilene that have drainage issues, so you'll have a lot more requests coming in.
I guess do we have confirmation that that storage unit facility, that is where the problem is starting?
I mean, when you go up there during the rain, yeah, you can see it, but it also comes from the property to, from the west. Um, natural lay of the ground, uh, everything's draining, uh, slanted that way. So the, the property to the west or the next two properties to the west, you're getting natural rainfall water. That's just finding its way where it wants to go. Um, and then it is coming, I mean, from the storage facility area, but once again, natural lay of the ground is sending it the way it wants to go. And, uh, it's the trickle effect. So the, uh, whether or not the basins are, um, actually going to do what they need to do. Um, to some degree, I do believe they do, that I think their comment, once again, is that if they're not going to do any good. Is the comment meant at the peak or the start of the area where their properties are? They, the drainage basins will not do any good up where their direct immediate problem is. They would potentially work for controlling as the water moves on down through the rest of the properties. The rest of the property owners that, uh, have made comments and, and know there's water issues, but, um, that's, that's where we're at at this point.
This is Commissioner Koloff. And have the engineers been able to quantify kind of what amount of water is coming from the storage units versus the properties to the west? Is that something that can be done with the topo?
Uh, it's, but, uh, it's possible. I, I can't answer that, you know, a hundred percent at this time, but I can definitely ask um, Jared Loomis with Olson, whether or not he has anything that would give us better guidance or information on that specific. But you can stand up there when it rains and you see that wa- water's coming from two different directions. So I can ask Olson on that, Commissioner Koloff.
Thank you. And then I wasn't, I think the, one of the proposed solutions was basically to have what I would call on premises. Uh, water detention for the storage units. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Was that the last? Yeah, that would have been the drainage that was, um, not really specifically engineered or studied. But it was a, it was a, a layout that the engineer did do briefly to try and show what capturing the water could potentially look like, um, off of their own, their own property. Um, but once again, are we, um, are we the city going to mandate that a property owner put those in or not? There's the gray area once again.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're kind of in a position now, um, where we're kind of just stuck with whatever has been done before us, right? So if we were going to do this project today, we would require a drainage study and we would be able to identify this. And that's what we would require, but because it's existing, we don't really have the ability to do that. Is that correct?
That's the, that's a very correct assessment from what I understand, and that's how, uh, the permit was issued. And drainage studies weren't required back at the timeframe that, um, this was done. And, and specifically now, it's part of the planning phase of everything that we go through with the community development. So at this point, we'll need, um, if you're relying on staff to get more information, we'll need more guidance on where you think we're ultimately going to go with this. Um, whether or not we, um, to be honest, feel that we need to be involved in this.
Yeah, my, my perspective on that comes down to cost, uh, again, drawing the rough equivalency to what we did with Faith Avenue, um, on that area. And again, as I stated in previous meetings, that, that enabled additional development. Where this is a case where everything's fully developed, uh, around the area. But that's, that's kind of the rough cost that I have in my mind, which I think total cost of that project was around three hundred, I want to say. Um, so that's, that's kind of the metric of if we're, if we're beyond that from the starting point of acknowledging that, um, the city doesn't have to do anything here. And that the city getting involved is also going to get involved in easement negotiations, which that was also brought up in the previous meeting where you have one of the property owners not liking one of the easements, that's a part of the proposal. So that whenever that happens, that means.
I can't remember the exact number, if it was sixteen or, uh, that number rings a bell, but there are several easements for properties where it, through the whole phasing, um, the city was going to have to obtain them for the, the water drainage to make its way from basin to basin and then drain on out to where it needed to go.
Right, right. So that, just looking at it from drawing equivalency there, um, uh, the only next thing I, I'm thinking of is, is it relates to this. Um, from what information came up in the last meeting, that there's that one particular storage building. And I don't know if it is something to where the city could acquire an easement of that ground that would part of that negotiation would be that they would, they would remove that building if that would actually cause any sort of substantial help to where, again, looking at that cost benefit analysis of if, if we can acquire an easement there that removes the building and then that helps
Right.
the problem for everybody, then that.
But then they're looking for, uh, uh, cost reimbursement
Right.
of, uh, another building.
Right.
That, by the way, I don't, it's a forty by.
And I don't know what that.
It's a very big building, I can tell you that, and they, they're looking at their, um, their revenue source of their monthly rentals and um, it was, it's going to be a pretty large number.
Right, and so that we may be priced out.
You know, they did kind of throw out that, you know, if, if the city paid for that and they wanted to to buy this north piece of this little property and do something there, but you know, the, there again, you're talking lots of dollars.
Right, and that's what I'm looking with, it's like to try to get a quantity on, on that to see if.
But then it, you circle the wagon back around, you know, are we going to, are we going to be involved with this? And are we going to expend the money expenditure in it?
We did ask the, uh, future owner to give us a price of what it would take to replace that building somewhere else.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know that he has or.
Yeah, he didn't get a really good estimate. He was just trying to get, um, a figure based on just the building replacement with the, with the concrete. And, and, uh, I, I don't remember the exact number, but it was over two hundred thousand. And that'd be pretty standard for a building in concrete and everything.
Yeah, and so that, that's where, as this discussion goes on, it seems like the cost of this project getting higher and higher to where being able to pay for it straight out of the stormwater fund doesn't seem, um, feasible. Brings to the, there's those other funding opportunities like doing specials, but then that, that brings to the next step of then asking that benefit district if they want to pay for it.
Yep.
So.
And, uh, none of that addresses the, uh, drainage from the west, those two properties there.
Um, this is Commissioner Koloff. Brad, you had mentioned, or maybe it was, uh, city manager Quinde, that there are some other areas of concern. Do you have a good, uh, feel for how many areas there are that are currently having stormwater issues?
Are in that specific location or other parts of town where, or can you help me out with?
Within the whole city. Yeah, I, I apologize for not being more clear. I, I'm, yeah, it's my understanding that there's something kind of north of the high school that's of concern as well. And then, of course, the downtown is, um, a really obvious one. So I, I'm just curious if you have a good feel, uh, for the number of areas where stormwater is an issue.
I would say there's, um, you've hit some of them, but there could be, um, four to five easily more of the, the downtown area. Um, all, all that was built back in the day with, um, don't take me a hundred percent on this, but I believe there are fifteen inch, um, pipes underneath the city downtown area. Uh, when you just, when you get a big rain like that, they're just, they'll flow at capacity. And it's just too much water to get it out in a short timeframe. Um, yes, there's been some issues, uh, north of the high school where they'd done some work before, put it in another inlet. Um, for the most part, I think, um, from what I've heard and understand and seen myself, that the inlets helped somewhat. But, um, once again, when we have the big problems, we're talking the, the two to three inches and within an hour of timeframe. You're specifically going to have the problems there. I know, um, we have a section of town, um, on Fifth Street. Specifically the east side of town, fourth, fifth, sixth over in there. Um, I believe that some of the problems that are, um, that come with that is it's just so flat over there in that area. Um, we just don't get, there's not much drainage over there to start with. And then it's so flat that it just doesn't move anywhere, uh, very fast until it just, um, decedes, uh, on its own. Another, uh, this big rain that we just had over the Labor Day holiday, to be honest, once again, that's just one of them frequents. We, we had water sitting where, um, some of our staff has not ever seen water sitting. On the south end of town, we know that the very south end, when we've had flood, major floods in the years, um, have been problems, but. We know that the very south end, when we've had flood, major floods in the years have been problems, but we did have water. Um over Buckeye there, and we had some water up uh. Temporarily engaging out in the traffic lanes up around uh Fourteenth and Buckeye this time. So, but when you have some uh the general problem areas, you're talking three or four. Specific areas um that encompass a a bigger area instead of just a one little specific yard or something. We do have drainage problems throughout town. It's honestly just the way they were. How it was built or not built. Um when I say not built, I'm talking about um drainage structures weren't even put in place. The engineering back then told them that the natural flow of the ground and curb and guttering would take care of it and move it out on its own. We came to see that uh some of that's probably not true. But we're talking um major dollars if we're. Uh putting infrastructure in already existing areas at this point. But we're caught between um what are we going to do to to take care of them issues?
So you had mentioned that Olson did a kind of a overview map of what we could potentially do with. Uh taking care of those waters or that water coming from the downspouts on the storage units. Are they still, I guess, looking at that to see if?
Well, Olson just presented it. I think the biggest thing is Olson was um we. We want to get an estimate yet, but I guess the. The property owner at this point said that. Out of a curiosity note, they'd like to know the estimate, but they weren't interested in doing them, to be honest, at this point. So once again, the, here we are. Can the city? Make them do anything or not? And I don't know what the answer to that is. I'd. Uh their their stand, I I mean, I think their stance is, and they obviously have an attorney also, but their stance is um. All this development of the property was approved by the city back in the day and. That's what they're, that's what they're going off of.
I'm not sure that one detention basin or downspout basins. Or even something for the west by itself is going to solve the problem for those two families. It's going to take. At least all three, something that addresses the water that runs from the west. Something that addresses the water that runs from the elevated storage area, uh and then the west basin to catch that. But the two property owners also said they didn't want a basin next to their house. So I mean, what do you do?
Yes, they did kind of make that comment. That was just one design option.
Right, the third one was all all new underground.
Concrete structure underneath, which was.
Like one point two, one point three million.
And that uh that involves getting easements and tearing up people's backyards and getting drainage structures put in place and.
Well, I guess do we have, that's kind of a tough one. But it is, I mean, it sounds like we're the the solution to the. This is. A cost point that's higher than what. That's. Stormwater drainage fund due to the Faith Avenue, and well, do you, I think it's fair to use that. Two hundred to three hundred thousand out of that fund, but that's not going to take care of this project. So just knowing that from rough numbers, I I don't know what it looks like to reach out. To the residents of that benefit district um. To see if if they're like, yes, we want the problem solved and yes, we're willing to have specials on it. Um. I I have no idea what that looks like, what that process would look like, but um. That that's the next question that's in my head. Cause if you get whatever a critical mass of those people say, yes, this is worth having specials on my property, then. Uh the stormwater drainage fund contributing. Two to three hundred to that project, and then the rest of the cost being covered by specials, then. Then we can do it, but if they don't want to pay for it, then then we really don't have a route forward to to solve all the problems.
And I think uh if you were asking me as a property owner, if I'd be willing to, I'd want to know what that cost would be. But we'd have to get the, well, I would suggest that we get a cost from Olson on addressing the west. Drainage from that, the uh. Elevated area, the storage areas, and then at least one of the. Drainage basins, package that together as one solution, come up with what that would cost. Per person or per property, and then also the one point two million dollar one. That may benefit more people, maybe a larger benefit district, but at least you have some numbers that you can say, here's what it would look like.
Right, and we've talked about this previously that, you know, there may not be a legal requirement for us to to do anything and. And while we're not, you know, held by engineering requirements, standards, or decisions from the past. Um you know, that there is a piece of that that plays into it where the the city approved this without drainage studies, which was the case, or that was a practice at the time. Um so that's that's kind of where I draw my my willingness to help with it, but. Um but yeah, even I mean, even even that assistance has to, it has to have a point that you can't go past.
How many property owners are directly affected, even in that area in the northeast there? I mean, it seems like we're hearing from maybe two or three of them, and is are there more than that that are affected that we're just not hearing from?
The uh previous packets had kind of that boundary laid out um. Thrown off a street, uh I think it was down to Charles. It was kind of that area boxed in between Fourteenth, Brady, Charles. Um and. Yeah, maybe Olive, kind of that rectangle or whatever in there kind of seemed about. The the benefit that would be the benefit district.
I guess what I'm saying is if you don't have water in your basement, it doesn't matter if you're across the street or you're across town. I mean, so calling that the benefit district is one thing, but if you're not personally affected by it, I could see not having a willingness to help out with that. With that problem. I guess that's really what I'm asking is how many people are getting water in their basements or having other ill effects as a uh a consequence of the drains there?
Well, we'll reach out to the people that are in that identified area, and as we reach out, we can just ask them what effects they're seeing during rains.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to get um and cost estimate from Olson on that. Um and I guess with the caveat of making sure that it truly does solve the issue. Um so I think that was a little bit of a misunderstanding from us previously was. Um we were under the assumption that those previous options from Olson did. Solve the issue from this, like from the um the point it begins, not down the down the way. Right, that was a little surprise for me. Do you have any further questions, comments on this item at this time?
My only comment is that if, you know, we've got, we know we've got drainage issues throughout the city. Um you know, maybe we can only pay for one at a time. I'm not sure what that that looks like, but. I think it's pretty obvious that we've got more than one drainage issue in the city of Abilene. Maybe we just look at a comprehensive plan to address all those.
Yeah, I fully agree with that. We just have to have a way to pay for it. Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll move to item two F, review city regulations for golf carts and low speed vehicles. Chief Wilkins.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chief Wilkins again. I was asked to come provide some information on. Golf carts, I think probably some, maybe some clarification on what we have. In place as far as special purpose vehicles. In two thousand nine, the Abilene City Commission adopted ordinance thirty one forty six authorizing the operation of special purpose vehicles on city streets. Special purpose vehicle is defined as a micro utility truck or a worksite utility vehicle. Worksite utility vehicles are probably more commonly referred to as a UTV or a side by side. Um the micro utility trucks, I'm not certain of of any of those that are that are currently on the road. I don't think that. We've issued at least recently any permits for those. Uh the application process was put in uh into place where. An individual comes to the police department, they fill out an application, they provide proof of ownership. Proof of insurance, an officer goes out and inspects it, and if it meets the criteria, they're issued a permit. There's a fifty dollar application fee. But in two thousand nine, when this was implemented, you had. John Deere Gators and Polaris had some Rangers. There was a few other ones on the market. The popularity of these UTVs and side by sides. Has soared um over the years. I think the sergeant that does the inspections, he had four come in just last week. Um so they're very, very popular. Um and this includes we've ran into, I think in July, I think it's referred to as um as a luxury golf cart. Um I think it starts as a golf cart chassis and then it looks like it's on steroids. Um but there's a couple that have met the criteria to fall under the worksite utility vehicle, and we've permitted them. Um traditional golf carts that you or I would go to the golf course and rent. Are are still um prohibited under that trap STO one fourteen point four. But the line have definitely gotten blurred between with the introduction of of these luxury golf carts that. Have come on the market lately and then a traditional golf cart. So I certainly can see why um. Perhaps some citizens have seen these and wondered, okay, are golf carts allowed? So. Um I think it's important to monitor it if we see a whole bunch of them come on, maybe look back at at some of the ordinances and see if what worked in two thousand nine still works in two thousand twenty five and two thousand twenty six. But that's where we're at right now. So with that, I can take any any questions.
So I guess, are you familiar, Mark Willie started Legacy Carts in Manhattan? Are those kind of the type that we're talking about?
Exactly what we're talking about. I think since July, um I think we've had. Four what are referred to as luxury golf carts. Two of them have passed inspections. Two of them, I believe, have not for one reason or the other. I think most of it is probably the the width. They may not have met the forty eight inch width required. Um but no, with with Mark's company, I think it's probably a high probability that they're going to become even more popular here in town, so.
And how does this affect the, I guess, legality? Can you, can you still, can you drive them on Buckeye?
Uh you're not supposed to.
Okay.
Unless it's being used, I believe there is an agricultural exception and that allows you to, otherwise you can cross Buckeye.
Okay. I don't notice a lot of them driving north, south on Buckeye through town. Um.
You shouldn't.
Yes, correct.
There's not some that that don't.
I was trying to think through the uh, I guess, the. The logistics of, you know, they have to get across Buckeye.
I think it's worth noting, I don't remember receiving any complaints about them, so I think the public overall is supportive of them. Um and I think the kudos to the individuals who have them. I don't know that we work. Any accidents involving them or take, have to take a whole lot of enforcement and action on them, so I think they're being responsible with.
Okay.
Uh Chief Wilkins, I'm the one who asked to have this on. The agenda, and I guess really my concern is really for fairness for, I guess, all, let's call them. I don't know if motors is the right word, but I mean, if if you're looking at fairness, you know, you can have a motorcycle which isn't forty eight inches wide. And obviously, that that can probably go a higher speed than your your golf cart can, but you know, some of these. Fifty cc motor vehicles. Aren't going to go much faster than that, but kind of on that same note, I can take my bicycle and I can take up a whole lane of traffic. Uh I might be able to go downhill thirty miles an hour on a good day, um but most of the time I'm probably not going to be able to go that fast. So. I guess what is the, what is the? I guess sensibility of that forty eight inch width. Um when certainly we allow other things that are not forty eight inches wide.
I don't disagree with you at all. I guess that's where I go back to is is what worked in two thousand nine, is it working today? Because. Uh I don't know that you hit on it, but you've got electric scooters now coming on the market. You've got electric bicycles that are coming on the market. Um to an extent, I don't know if they've hit our communities all that hard, um but they're probably coming. So I think it's something that we certainly keep an eye on.
How many of these, I guess, I I don't want to create any problems or address any any problems that we're not having, but. It seems like there is uh at least a group of. People who have these vehicles who aren't being able to get them licensed, I guess. Are you amenable to taking the steps to allow that group? I think specifically it is a. Parts from Willie's over there in Manhattan, and I think really the only. Thing that it didn't meet was the width. I mean, so and maybe that's a question for the commission here as well. Um are we willing to license those at a narrower width or? Um just look at the whole thing altogether, I guess. I'd be curious to hear your feedback.
Guess from my perspective, um as long as they're, and I can't, it was in our online packet, but I can't remember the specific um. Things, the golf carts, if you will, had to cover to be street legal. Um. But I guess, yeah, to me, it does seem a little odd that they can meet all of the requirements, but then they're not forty eight inches wide, so they don't count. Yeah, it's just.
I I don't disagree. I think there's there's a few options that we could look into. I think you could you could take away and you could do perhaps a some kind of a public safety education campaign for if you're going to drive these on the streets. Um you know, here's what you need and and essentially kind of let them police themselves. Uh you know, unless they do something egregious where a law enforcement officer has to get involved. Uh I think there's a few different things we could do. Um and I I certainly don't mind reaching out to communities of our size to see how they've handled it. I'm sure not, we're not the only one that is seeing the spike, and I don't mind doing that at all.
Agreed, that's that was my thought as well.
Mr. For your, an overwhelming amount of the individuals that apply pass. Um the couple that that haven't, and if it's specific to the the luxury golf carts, Commissioner Kohloff, that you're you're talking to. I know a couple of the ones that we looked at that didn't initially pass. They just simply got on Amazon and purchased some spacers for the wheels and that that made them wide enough to where they were at the forty eight inches.
I mean, that to me just obviates the need for a more sensible plan if we're, we've got uh a team of solution.
Yeah, so yeah, my my feeling on that is is the width requirement is kind of. Uh pointless, um as long as they have seat belts, turn signals, brake lights, everything else that they need to have in that list. I don't, personally, I don't see why, whether it's forty seven and a half inches or forty eight and a half, whether that. Makes it a safe operational vehicle onto the streets.
Would, I guess, uh I don't know if maybe this is something City Attorney Martin would be willing to prepare for next meeting. Or a study session, do we want to look at? Either removing the width requirement or making. A search like that so that just about any vehicle would qualify um or something else altogether?
Uh I certainly could if that's the preferred direction of the commission.
Yeah, I'm I'm agreeable if safety is maintained and we reach out to other comparable communities and. Uh if it sounds like there is this track record of responsible use to it, and so if we can. Change the ordinance to where the responsible use continues and allows it, then I'm agreeable.
Yeah, and you're like, I mean, you're not really, realistically, you're not going to see regular, you know, golf course golf carts. On the streets because they're not able to meet the other requirements. Um so you know, these luxury golf carts are luxury golf carts, but they're. They're basically a a little toned down engine wise version of a UTV that virtually the same size, so.
Chief Wilkins, do you have any uh preference as far as a width requirement or how we might address that?
I don't let, give me some time to do my due diligence. Uh I just, I don't want to put something out there that's that. You know, interferes with with what might be required of a state statute or something like that. Um you know, I'm all for if 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 we can make it work, then let's do it, but I would like some time to 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 do a little bit of research.
Yeah, I absolutely understand. I guess my my preferred direction would be that we maybe look at a couple of ideas on another study session before we. Go forward with changing anything.
Agree, yep. Any further uh questions, discussion on that item? Okay, um hearing none, we will move to. Uh heading through their recess of meeting and just to kind of give an overview of the plan here, because it's definitely out of the norm. Um we are planning to recess our study. Um, we are planning to recess our study. Session, reconvene the study session at the Abilene wastewater treatment plant uh for a tour of that facility. Um, and do some inspection on some issues that are happening out there, and then we will um. Reconvene the study session here at the um library we're at now. And discuss uh those two additional items under heading six.
Question to staff, you only got two of us um here if.
You don't need a quorum for a study session.
Right, or yeah, just, or wondering in the how the this is going to play out in discussion if we want to hit some of the other discussion items and then. Go ahead and.
We absolutely can if you want to.
Yeah, because I don't know how the other three would be able to be since everybody else is gone.
Sure.
How they're going to be involved in the.
I would say if 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 commissioners don't have a problem, that you could go ahead and. Discuss the other two topics. Real quick, if you want to, and and then we could go out and and do that, i- if you're acceptable to that.
To Major Quinday, is it? Okay.
What does the rest of the commission think of that?
I that that's fine with me.
I'm also okay with that.
Yep.
Okay, so with that, we will. Not have a recess of our study session. Um, we will move to item six A. Wastewater Treatment Plant Building Settlement and Crack Mitigation Bids, Public Works Director Anderson, when you're able to come.
Okay, uh, commissioners, we uh. You were all informed of the structural concerns that we'd had at the wastewater plant and we. Got to the point, and I'll just kind of brief the um agenda sheet that you guys received in your packet. We led uh. And engineered structural assessment report that we hired with uh with BG Consultants. Um, based on what they found on the agreement, we then entered into an actual engineering project with BG Consultants. Um, that uh included the scope of work and the bid submittal. Um, that project was actually posted and open for bids on August fourth. And then sealed bids were due back um on August twenty ninth, so we gave them pretty much the the month of August. And the big key there we had was uh interested contractors were expected to visit onsite to actually see what. What they were getting into. And when it came time for the actual uh meeting dates, we had um. Two um prime contractors show up. And then um several subcontractors show up. Um, to basically look at the project. When it came down to the bid itself. We accidentally had one prime turn in a bid. Um, I don't know what the reasoning for um some of the other ones. I I, in my opinion, and the engineer's opinion, um, this scope of work, um, dollar wise and project wise. Um, it's not a very large one, to be honest with you. And uh a lot of them are already tied up in big projects and have bigger projects on the side, so we kind of. Kind of um took that into consideration of why that reasoning might have might have been that way. Um, but we were happy with the the one prime contractor that did put in a bid. Um, NF Construction of Marion, Kansas, um, their amount. Uh, of two hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars with work expected to start this fall. Um. Was basically the uh the bid that was put in. So we're just uh going to go over some of the information, um, when we get a chance later on to kind of let you kind of see what was going on there. Um, the main things with the structural repairs are helical pile for stabilization of the building. And repair some concrete, structure reinforcement, crack repair, and then and then painting. Um, so that's basically the the core of what the project's going to entail. Um, to try and get uh things to stop, stop moving, and you guys will get to see. Some of the actual problems, what's going on out there. Um, I just feel that it's a problem that we can't um push down the road and wait and see what happens. I think we need to. Uh, something's happening now and we need to take um do everything we can to try and prevent that at this point, so we don't have any more problems. So uh, just real quickly, does anybody have any other questions about the? The bid process or or anything like that that we went through?
Brad, you'll have to forgive me here, I'm off of my my notes, but what what was that bid compared to the engineer's estimate on it?
Um. I think, and and I'm sorry, I don't have that directly in front of me. I forgot to bring that with me, but. I think the engineer's estimate, we were pushing around two hundred and fifty. Um, and the bid came in at two nineteen, three thirty. Um, the one thing I did forget to say is that that this NF Construction. Um, has worked on several projects that BG has put out, and he gave me some. Projects that he's done for reference around the state, this same type of project, building stabilization. Um, so the one thing about this NF Construction is a. The engineer that specifically worked on this project for us, they're um, they're very well known. They have a good working relationship, so. Um, that I I did feel positive about that, but. So your original question question, Commissioner Coloff was um, I don't have the exact number, but it was right around the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was my my question too, so if we have that for the next meeting.
My question exactly as well.
Good to proceed.
Okay.
Do we have any further questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, or we'll move to six B Water Utility uh Revenue Requirements Center and City Manager Quinday.
Now, as we've been talking about, the water utility has been operating at a financial deficit for the past five years. Uh, expenses have risen from one point seven million in twenty twenty to two point five million in twenty twenty four. At the same time, revenues uh grew modestly from one point six five million to one point nine four. The imbalance produced annual losses um of up to five hundred and sixty six thousand. In twenty twenty four, with a projected shortfall of eight hundred and forty five thousand this year. Uh, we were able to uh erase that deficit by cancelling uh. Much needed capital projects and reducing costs like we do with the general fund. Uh, but it still doesn't address the structural deficit. And the deficit lies in the city's cost to uh produce water. Just using a simple calculation of the water utilities expenses uh each year. And the amount of water that's produced. It costs, and there's a typo in your cover sheet, but five dollars and seventy four cents per thousand gallons to produce water in twenty uh twenty five. Uh, that's projected to rise to six dollars and ninety cents in twenty twenty six. But just focusing on the current cost of five seventy four per thousand gallons, residential and commercial customers pay four dollars and forty seven. Uh, cents per thousand gallons, or a dollar twenty seven. Less than it costs the city to produce the water. Uh, and Rural Water District number two pays a dollar eighty per thousand gallons, which is just short of four dollars. Um, less than what it costs the city to produce. And that dollar eighty is uh affected January twenty five. Before that, it was a dollar forty four, and before that, it was eighty eight cents per thousand gallons. Um, I did find a spreadsheet. Uh, there's, I don't know who the author is. But it showed that the um. City's cost to produce water each year from nineteen ninety eight to two thousand eighteen was a dollar fifty three per thousand gallons. That initially caught me off guard because your cost didn't stay the same every year, where every year it's a dollar fifty three. Um, so I started working on a spreadsheet that uh shows what that is. Uh, since nineteen nineteen ninety eight uh to present and the Rural Water District. Contributed actually nine hundred and, I believe, three thousand dollars. Um, back in nineteen ninety eight for the eight million dollar water plant, or about eleven percent. Using the actual cost to produce water, that was paid back uh by two thousand five, so everything after two thousand five would be. Well, more than paying back. The, now that was taking the full expenses of the water utility, but even if uh one was to argue that. Well, we should only count in production cost. All of our customers pay for the distribution system as well, and we have to use the distribution system to get water even to. Our outside of the city customers and the rural water district. But even if you were to agree to that argument, okay, let's take out the distribution cost, focus solely on production cost. There's no depreciation factored into that. Uh, that plant was. I think eight million dollars or seven point nine million dollars in nineteen ninety eight, and just using straight line depreciation, that's about two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. A year that should be added depreciation. Because ideally, the city would be putting away two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars every year. So in forty years, you had that same amount of money. I'm assuming the city factored that uh borrowed that money through a general obligation bond, so the cost of money is not factored in that cost. But what I have for the uh commission today, and I can send this to you because it looks like it's awful small for the the public to see. These are just scenarios. I'm not saying this is what we're recommending. It just shows you the different approaches that the city can use. To shore up the deficit. I used um three different options. One is to only adjust the monthly customer charge. Some people refer to it as a meter charge, which currently for uh residential and commercial customers in town is eighteen seventy seven a month. Or to just adjust the volumetric rate, that is, leave the mu- monthly charge alone, but increase the cost of water. So, and then the third one is a combination of both. And if you look on your screen on the right, the revenue generation um with the numbers that I plugged in. Adjusting for monthly only would bring in two point nine million dollars. I factored in ten percent delinquency rate, which may be a little high, but we have a quite a few number of people who don't pay their bill each month. Um. But what I should do is actually factor in how much bad debt we have annually. That, and then also reducing our sales by twenty percent. I use four hundred million gallons a year as an average of sales for water. Though you take off uh. Twenty percent or twenty five percent, you're down to three hundred thousand, which impacts your revenue. But your cost could also drop. Uh, proportionally, except for your fixed cost. So in these examples that I have, uh. Currently, a residential customer in town pays eighteen seventy seven a month for a meter charge. They pay. Four dollars and forty seven cents per thousand gallons. If you factor in that. A usage of three thousand gallons, that volumetric cost would be thirteen dollars and forty one cents. Sales tax is a dollar twenty five. The water protection fee is ten cents. And their total cost would be thirty three dollars and fifty three cents. Changing the monthly customer charge from eighteen seventy seven to twenty five dollars. Uh, changes that monthly cost to thirty nine seventy six or a six dollar twenty three cent increase. Volumetric only would change that cost to thirty nine oh four or five dollars and fifty one cents, and a combination changes it to five dollars and ten cents. Those numbers can be played with. Those are just numbers that were plugged in for illustration purposes. Um, commercial would be impacted. Similarly, going from eighteen seventy seven to thirty five dollars, their difference would be sixteen dollars, volumetric would be eleven, and a combination would be fifteen. The residential customers outside of the city currently pay thirty seven fifty four for their monthly charge and nearly uh nine dollars per thousand gallons. So their adjustments are much lower than uh. Customers who are paying less in production costs, and you can see under these scenarios that a uh monthly charge. Would cost them five dollars and forty six cents, and that's changing their monthly charge from thirty seven to forty three dollars. Volumetric only would change their water rate from just under nine dollars a thousand to nine dollars and twenty five cents. And then a combination would be uh increasing their monthly charge to thirty eight dollars, their volumetric rate to nine. And um that would cost them in sixty two cents more a month. So I just wanted to bring this to you and I'll send it to you so you can look at it much closer. There's a behind each one of those tabs, uh. Kelsey, I'll go to the one that says uh. Combination, which would be the third tab over. You'll be able to see uh what that generates based on changing those numbers, how many meters there are. Um, what that generates by customer class. One thing that we're still working on is a tiered water rate, where the more that you use, um, the higher uh your cost would be. The issue is unless we take the data for at least three years for every customer. And put that into a spreadsheet, you're going to have to use a weighted average to figure out what those break off points should be. But if you put in every customers and you have twenty or three thousand meters, you put that in by customer class. Then you could have a a true apples, apples, and that's what a a cost of service study would do. So, as I recommended before, I'd like to bring this back again after you've had time to look at these spreadsheets. And we can talk about different scenarios. Um, spreadsheet, we can change the numbers on the monthly meter fee, the volumetric rate, all of that, and you'll see right then in real time. How does that impact uh customers? Even if you change the uh what they use. Somebody uses twenty three hundred gallons, you type that in, it shows what that impact would be on the scenarios. But ideally, uh, you would have something in place by January to sh- start shoring up the deficit and then. Start a cost of service study that. Will truly show what that cost is by customer class, and then we can uh. Or the city can look then at how that should be allocated. What I didn't do, or and I can give you a copy of it, is if I were to change the Rural Water District to just the cost of what it costs us to make money. Break even to make water, how much that would reduce what we have to push off to the other customer. I do meet with the Rural Water District Board um tomorrow evening, just to give them. What I see as numbers and when they paid that back. And from my estimation, that from two thousand six to present, uh, four million dollars has been subsidized or. They paid four million dollars less, so, and put that in perspective, we charge our customers or. It costs us, we charge them a dollar eighty per thousand gallons. I believe they charged their customers six dollars and ninety five cents per thousand gallons, and it requires no treatment. It just passes through a meter and they resell it. Our meter fee is eighteen seventy seven, theirs is. Forty seven, I believe, forty seven dollars and uh a new connection is five thousand dollars, just to hook up. Ideally, it would get to where it's even where the. City customers, uh residential and commercial are not subsid- subsidizing that any anymore. And that's easier said than done. It'll take a long time and conversations and negotiation, but. Ultimately, you have twelve years left on the agreement. If you can't come to an agreement. Uh, then just say, okay, then in twelve years, we're just not going to renew this. Go find some water sources in a treatment plant. Not as easy said as done, and I know that sounds crass, and I'm not trying to threaten anybody, but at some point. The customers in town have to not subsidize their operations, at least from my my perspective.
Yeah, fully agree with that.
City Manager Quinday, what uh, my understanding is that we're using some of the water rights that they own to produce that water. Can you speak to that?
I didn't understand. He said.
My, my apologies. I believe that that we're using some of the water rights that are owned by the Rural Water District. Is that correct?
Not that I know of. Uh, I'd have to check with uh Mike or Brad, but I believe we own our own well field and operate it. Their contribution was nine hundred thousand dollars back in uh nineteen ninety eight towards the water plant. And I may be inaccurate. Maybe they'll they'll school me tomorrow and tell me, you know, you're using some of our water rights, but that would be. Unusual since we report to uh K D H E, what in the Kansas Water Office, what we use annually. That's a down and dirty. I was going to go into a lot more detail, but without the. Three of the commissioners being here to be able to see this spreadsheet and and talk through it, and then later the hour, I'll bring that back after I send this to you and you guys can.
Yes, you you'll email this out to us.
Yes.
City Manager Quinday would ask that if, uh, I think maybe there was something else you presented here earlier today that was not in the packet. If you could. I don't know if you can just append those to the agenda so that the public has access to anything that we have as well. I had some feedback from a constituent last week that some of the budget stuff you were presenting, even in the meeting, they weren't able to read that. Up on the up on the screen, so just. In the interest of transparency, if we can have all that accessible to the public as well. So just, in the interest of transparency, if we could have all that accessible to the public as well.
Yeah, just to clarify too, it is included in the packet online, um, so we just have to go on, online, but yeah, these TV screens are not Jumbotron, so it's gonna be difficult if you're just relying on the
And Kelly
numbers shown in here.
Is working on a way to move those closer to the public so they can see that. Because no matter how large we make those, now some of the presentations that I present to the commission, uh, I finish at five minutes to four, though I can't get them included in the packet, but once I present them, I can send them to the, uh, to the commission, if that's something that you want, and anybody that wants to see it.
I guess rather than having, uh, I guess the, the public ask you or ask a commissioner for it, if we could just add those into the packet after the fact somehow?
I'm not sure how you do, I will have to check how you add something to the packet after the meeting.
It could get attached to the minutes. Cause that's, sometimes minutes are separate.
Well, they're separate, but then that's an official document.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or it could be something with our, um, what, what Kelly's worked on of that kind of landing page, it could, those, those supplemental documents could live on there.
Have a link to supplemental documents, maybe that's better.
That's a good idea, cause.
I didn't know, I guess the way I, we have typically, when we go to the agendas and minutes, we have the agenda, and then we have the minutes after that meeting is held. I guess I would be surprised if there wasn't a way to add supplemental documents into that, that link somewhere. Or an additional link just for the supplemental documents.
Uh, the only supplemental documents that we would hand out to the commission would be presentations that, uh, city staff puts up on the screen, such as the PowerPoints, that once this budget's over, I don't foresee me doing many of those.
That is specifically what I'm asking for, or at least what the constituent was asking for, but, um, yeah, if, if that's, I don't know, I, I just think that's best policy going forward, if we're presenting anything in packets, it should be available to the public to review after the fact.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we could probably do a link if there's any supplemental documents added, Kelly.
Commissioner Whit has a great
Kelly may have said yes.
Throw that on there, thanks Kelly. And I have your information about sewer that Commissioner Kohoff wanted to talk about.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, this is just kind of a real quick point, um, I think right now our, um, rules allow for a, a commercial customer to decide whether they want to use a three month winner average or an annual average, but we don't extend that same privilege to our residential customers. Um, and I guess, I don't know if that requires any research, I mean, to me, that's kind of just a, a fairness issue, um. There's a, at least one resident has reached out to me and said that because of the type of housing or tenants that he has, he actually gets penalized by that, um, and he's, and it's not, I know, the numbers don't make sense to me, I guess, so I'd just like some more information on that, but, um, he has a significant penalty on his sewer rates because of the water usage during the winter, um, like three or four times what it would be if it was just using his actual water rates to calculate the sewer.
Did he come talk to staff about his concerns? If it's recent, I haven't heard about it.
I believe it, I believe he at least spoke to somebody at the front desk there, um, but I'm not sure how recent that would have been, I, I mean, my guess, it may, it may have even been today, to be honest with you. I guess just from an, an action perspective, I don't know if that's easy data to chew up and see, you know, what the outlier months are for water users.
Well, the general principle behind using the, uh, average of winter is to benefit the customer, because that's the low water usage time, as opposed to, uh, using summer months, which would be the higher use. And if you use their twelve month usage, and somebody has a water leak that spikes their usage, they're gonna be paying them for that for a year. The, the principle behind using the three, uh, three or four months in the winter is to get them the lowest usage. Where their sewer
Yeah, I do unders- I do understand that, and I think, I guess what I'm saying is it doesn't seem like that's happening, at least in this instance, so I don't know how widespread that is. Um, I guess I kind of just want some more information about that, but my understanding is that we do extend that privilege to the commercial customers. And just from a fairness standpoint, I don't think it makes sense not to allow residential customers to have that choice if we're giving it to commercial customers.
I still, I'm not following still, cause it's an ordinance, so we don't get the, we don't choose how we apply it or don't apply it to residential customers. The ordinance states what we have to do.
Right, I'm suggesting that potentially we need to change that ordinance to reflect that flexibility. Does that make sense?
No.
Tell me, tell me why not?
Because the ordinance says that we use the three or four months low average for customers to calculate their, uh, sewer fee. You're saying you want the residential to have the ability to say they want to use that or their twelve month average?
Yeah, so my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm misunderstanding this, but it's not the low three months, it's December, January, and February, which are assumed to be the low three months.
Yes, that's the principle behind it, but if
Right, and so, I guess what I'm saying is in practice, at least for the customer that reached out to me, that, that actually penalizes him like two or threefold.
Okay, so if we change it so they have an option, and I'm just thinking out loud, and they say, well, I just want you to build me based on my twelve month average. Then they have a water leak, and those water leaks can be, you know, five thousand gallons to a hundred thousand gallons. They'll be penalized that way, because otherwise we'll have to give them the option to say, well, never mind, that's too high, I want to change it back.
Um, somebody who's more familiar with this might be able to enlighten me, but someone has told me there's actually a mechanism to address that as well. When there is a, when there's a water leak that is identified, there's some mechanism to let the city know that it existed, and then, I don't know if they, you know, if that happened in December, if they just take the average of January and February, or how that's addressed, but I've had another, uh, landlord reach out to me and tell me that that, the city actually was really helpful for them when they had a broken pipe in the, in the winter.
Well, I think for staff, it would be helpful that if somebody had a concern about how they're being billed, regardless if it's sewer, water, wastewater, if they come to staff and say, here's my issue, uh, then we would have firsthand knowledge and see how we could address it.
Yes, and again, it's my understanding that they did reach out to the city, um, again, it may have been as recent as today. Um, but we're basically just told that's the way it is, and you have to live with it.
Well, there was a gentleman I overheard yelling today about his sewer bill, but he walked out before the answer could be a, uh, provided to him, and if they're not happy with what they're told by the, uh, staff at the front counter, they can always ask to see their supervisor, or they can ask to see the city manager. If somebody says, you're gonna have to live with it, doesn't mean that's fine.
I will sure pass that along.
Yeah, then I, I'd just be interested to see what that ordinance is, so if we could have that in our next information.
If I had my computer, I can send you a link, they're all available online.
Yeah, yeah. That'd be great.
Okay.
Do you have any questions, comments on that item? Um, are you still wanting to, for us to, to go to the wastewater treatment plant?
Well, I think the reason we asked for the commission to go, and I was hoping all five would be here, so you could see the structural issues, uh, that the wastewater plant is seeing, because putting it on paper doesn't do the justice of what you'll see when they're talking about this wall is moving and the pipes that, you know, if it moves anymore, these pipes could be damaged, so I think it's important for at least ten minutes ago, look and see what they're talking about, how critical it is to get that fixed. We'd better inform the decision when we ask for permission to spend the two hundred and one thousand dollars to fix it.
I guess, do we want to send out a list of times that we could all meet? I, I don't, I don't know how that works, if it's only, there's only two of us that are gonna be going out there at seven fifteen at night. Is, is it helpful to view it during operational hours, or does it matter?
It's always operating.
Well, I guess when there's staff there, that's what.
We can schedule a time that, uh, and I don't know availability, but at, uh, three thirty or three fifteen on the twenty second, before a meeting. Well, no, because if you're all there, then you have to be in session. Cause you're ultimately gonna talk about it.
Yeah, that's a question to those that aren't, aren't here, uh, if you're wanting to prioritize a time to, to be there to check it out, or or if we just go ahead and check it out here after this meeting.
Uh, I was actually the one who requested that we do that right at four o'clock, uh, today, um, so that's typically good for me, and if it is three o'clock, or maybe we all sit in our cars and join one at a time, so we're not interactive, I'm open to any solution that makes sense, but typically before the meeting is better for me.
Or between
Yeah, and I always, I always have clients up until about probably two thirty or three, and so I really can't, on a meeting night, I'm doing good to be here by four. But I could come a different time, like, if you just wanted just me to come. Um, but on meeting nights, I'm, I'm really, I can't get there probably before four.
How about if, uh, you get, each commissioner reaches out to Brad and schedules a time between now and, uh, the twenty second to go take a, a look, it shouldn't take more than ten minutes, but I think it's important for you to see the structural issues that they're having.
Yeah, that works for me.
Is there a time or a day of the week that's better?
No, not really. You're, go ahead and just, uh, shoot me an email, give me a, give me a couple timeframes that you're available on specific days, and I'll, I'll just try and make it work. If you're in between the hours of basically seven and four on a weekday, uh, the, the plan is staffed and we can get you in, and uh, between the superintendent out there and the, uh, the maintenance person, Brendan Alvarez and myself, there's three of us that are in the scope on this project, so, and we can make it work. If you guys all just send a, a couple different dates that you have a window and a time, more than likely, we're gonna make it work for you.
Okay. Does everyone understand?
It sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Okay, with no further items, I would consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In all second?
All second.
Dealer's choice again, Shaila, motion has been moved and seconded, do we have any commission discussion?
I just, I'm not a commissioner, but I'll send the link to the commissioners for the sewer rates and cost recovery, uh, so you can review it.
Okay, thank you. Any further commission discussion? Being done, would you roll call vote, Commissioner Whit?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff?
Hi.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries, we are adjourned.